Yeah. Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today's November 2nd, 2021, and want to welcome everybody for our regular session today. And before we get into the pledge, I provide an opportunity for each of our supervisors to say hello. Go to District 1 Supervisor Petrie Horstman.
Yes, good morning, all. It's great to see everybody in November. I can't believe it's November, but I guess we're moving along into our fall. So looking forward to working with members of the public, our staff, and my board members here. So let's get the work done for our county. So great to be here this morning.
All right, thanks, Petrie. And then we have Supervisor Veronica Bassman from District 2.
Good morning, everyone. Look forward to having a good meeting today. Again, like Supervisor Horstman said, I can't believe it's November. Time is flying, but good stuff happening and look forward to a productive meeting. Thank you.
All right. And then we have District 4 Supervisor Judy Begay.
Good morning, everyone. I'm also glad you know that I'm part of this meeting today again, and that we have a lot before us to discuss and plan and approve. So I'm looking forward to today's meeting. And well, and thank you to everyone that's on the call, and then also my fellow colleagues. I will not be on the camera, but we'll take, I'm just gonna be on the phone most of the day. So thank you very much. Bye.
All right, thank you, Judy. And then we have our Vice Chair and District 5 Representative, Lena Fowler.
Yes, thank you. Thanks so much. And boy, we're in the holidays, aren't we? We're right, moving right along. So it is another beautiful day. Every day is a beautiful day. So thanks so much for joining us and taking the time to join us and and just learn more about some of the things that we're working on. We're, now he's doing a great job. Thank you, Steve, to you and your staff, and always working and dedicated to our citizens and residents in our county. So thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Lena. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. So if everybody could please rise and join me, and if you don't have a flag, face to the east. And I'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And and I'll report out that I I had that email to me, so I would do it correctly, because I hit one of those phases in my life that you you repeat in action, you repeat in action, and suddenly it just disappeared. So I messed up last week and had the wrong words.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Very quickly, can we do an audio check for Vice Chair Fowler? Her 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 audio is coming across pretty muffled.
Okay. Check, check. Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead, talk.
Check, check, check.
Okay. You'll, if you get closer to the mic, it'll be good. You were a little muffled before when we began.
Okay, what about now?
Better.
Is that better?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. We're ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Okay, next item of business we have is the Call to the Public, which is a courtesy the Board offers to individuals that would like to bring an item to our attention. It is a courtesy we provide, is for items that are not on our agenda. So we'll have our Clerk of the Board, Lindsay Daley, explain what you need to do if you would like to take advantage of this opportunity. Lindsay?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. If you would like to provide a comment during Call to the Public, which is now, you can hit the raise hand icon that looks like a hand at the bottom of your screen, and then we will be notified that you want to speak. And at this time, Chair Ryan, we don't have any emails in the Board Comment email box, and we don't have anyone on the phone. So it's just hitting the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any raised hands. You, Lindsay?
No, there's no hands at this time.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting. And the next item of business is a consideration of possible action to approve a proclamation declaring November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month. And as I understand it, we have Miranda Morales and Rena Contreras ready to read the proclamation for us.
Mr. Chair, also Erica Philpott will also be making some comments on some events that we're sponsoring for this month.
Okay. Fantastic. And Arca, did you want to, you know, I can provide comment after. Awesome. Did you have anything to lead in?
No, I can, I'll share the events afterward. Thank you, Chair Ryan.
Okay, fantastic. So I'll turn it over to Miranda and Rena.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us here. We're really excited and a little nervous, but we came to represent with our staff. And I guess we'll just start reading. So, oh, also, I'm gonna introduce myself. She A. Arena Contreras, Yenishya, Madish Gijni, Nishla, Nakai, Basish Chin, Nakai, Dashache, Nakai, Dashanalan.
Yeah, Chair Ryan and members of the Board, Shayya Miranda Morales, Yenishya, Hashka Headzohi, Nishla, Kisanee Bearstrap, Basish Chin, Nakade Neda, Dashache, Nakase, Bahadashanela, Apitego, Astana, Shlan. And thank you for having us today.
All right, so proclamation designating November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the United States Congress began recognizing American Indian Week in 1986, and President George H. W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating National American Indian Heritage Month for November 1990, and similar proclamations have been issued since 1994. And whereas national discourse often refers to Native Americans using terminology such as American Indian tribes, tribal nations, and indigenous peoples, we recognize that indigenous incorporates the vast diversity of the first peoples of this continent. And whereas Coconino County values and celebrates Native American culture in our community and workforce, reflecting our core values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, so that all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, safe, and sustainable lives. Whereas and whereas, according to the 2020 U.S. Census, more than 36,225 American Indians and Alaska natives reside in Coconino County, representing nearly a quarter of the total population. And whereas Coconino County is the homeland to the Havasu Pai, Hopi, Hoala Pai, Kaibab Paiute, San Juan Southern Paiute Tribes, and the Navajo Nation. And whereas there are 22 sovereign tribes in Arizona whose locals, whose local economies, foods, medicines, remedies, art, and literature are vital contributions to American life and endeavors.
And whereas Native American culture includes diverse moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and preserv- preserve, preserve, preservance, sorry, that deserve circulation of future generations. And whereas Coconino County honors our Native American active-duty servicemen and veterans for their bravery and sacrifice, and we recognize how Native Americans answer the call to serve our nation's armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. And whereas Coconino County honors the achievement of Native Americans celebrating the rich histories, diverse cultures, and important contributions to our nation. And whereas Coconino County encourages all citizens to learn more about the first peoples of this land, the Native Americans who first called our communities home, and whose sacred lands are acknowledged as their identity, where their ancestors are buried, where their natural laws originate, their libraries and archives, their pharmacy, and the source of all that sustains them from time beyond memory. And now, therefore, be it resolved that in the spirit of celebrating and honoring the positive contributions, selfless sacrifices of Native Americans to our county and nation, we do hereby recognize November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month and encourage all residents to embrace and reflect upon the diversity that strengthens us.
And I turn to our Native American members of our Board to see if you would care to make the motion in the second.
Thank you.
Chair Fowler.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am honored. And thank you so much for reading the proclamation. It looks so beautiful. I am honored to move that we approve this proclamation that was just read. Thank you.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Fowler. And I need a second. Would you care to make the second Supervisor Begay? So did we lose Supervisor Begay? Yeah, we did.
I'll make the second.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Bassman. And Supervisor Begay is using her phone, and telecommunications are always the, well, we know, we went broadband improve. So I have a motion and a second before us. All in favor of the motion, vote aye. Aye. Any opposed, non-opposed, motion carries. And then I'll provide an opportunity for the Board members to comment, but let me turn to Erica so she can tell us about the events that HR and other members of our community will provide.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. Good morning, members of the Board. Thank you to Arena and Miranda for reading the proclamation today. They are two of the members of our planning committee for this month, and so want to thank them and the other members of the committee, which includes Janice Bradley, Francine Hanani, Melissa John, Tiffany Kerr, Shirley Watkins, Lisa Yazi, Cheryl Barlow, Mary Sidio, Viviana Reyes, Leanne Little, Lawrence Littleman, Ashley Benz, Jenny Buckinghorse, Haley Anawa, are all on the committee as well. So thank you to all of them for their hard work and putting such great events together for this month. And had the kickoff on Sunday at the Aerobic Winter Challenge event. So that was a great event. Some other things that are coming up, we have a presentation tomorrow on Wednesday, November 3rd, from 11 to 12 on Navajo Nation Courts and Peacemaking by Dr. Raymond Austin from NAU. So partnership there. Also, on Wednesday, tomorrow, from 12 to 1:00, Christopher David from NACA will be with us to present COVID mental stresses. So that will be a great presentation. Arena will be facilitating and mediating a discussion about the Hulu show Reservation Dogs. So that will start kickoff on Thursday, that conversation from 12 to 1:00. Also, there'll be a presentation on Navajo culture and family from Ms. Charlie, which will be on Friday, November 5th, from 10 to 11:00. We have a presentation on Hopi nonprofit supply gift boxes that were used during COVID-19. That'll be on Wednesday, the 10th. Cultural Wellness from Carrie Dallas from NACA will be on Monday, November 15th. We have a Hopi culture and family presentation on Tuesday, November 16th, at 10:00. Emmanuel Webb will be presenting a humor and comedy hour for us on Thursday, the 18th, from 12 to 1:00. And Tiffany Kerr will be doing a presentation on ACE's adverse child experiences on Monday, the 29th, from from 12 to 1:00. So there, that's a sampling of some of the offerings that we'll be having. There's a couple other presentations as well that are being finalized, and so we'll make sure all of those are on SharePoint. And thank you to the committee for giving us so many educational opportunities throughout the month.
Take off my mute again. Thank you, Erica. Obviously, quite a bit going on. Which really appreciate all the efforts on this. What I'll do is turn to the Board members next for additional comments. And I'll start with Vice Chair Fowler.
Well, thank you. And thanks so much again for reading the proclamation. And thank you, Erica, to you and your diversity team for putting on these events. And just every, every year, we, in November, you come up with such a great event. So thank you so much. And just to learn about each other, you know. We all come from various walks of life, and we, and it, that life has made us who we are. And I know that, you know, I, I didn't speak English at all when I entered school, you know. And there's a lot to learn about each other. And those knowledge that we have about who we are and and our own culture and our own way of life, and knowing who we are is very important. You know, we introduce ourselves with our plan. I got my bitter water plan. With the treatment, it really tells me that I am, I am a bitter water woman. And my mother, great grandmother, it goes through all the way back through the lineage. I know who who I am. And I know where I'm from. I know where my birth and burial is buried. And that, that right there really stabilizes us and really puts a firm foundation down for us. And so recognizing and appreciating different cultures is so important, just to learn from each other. So I, I can think that, you know, Native American month is, I get it, it's not just this month. Every day, we should be learning about each other, you know, just to appreciate each other's differences. And that, that's how we make up this, you know, that's, that's the life that we all have on this Mother Earth here. So anyway, I just want to thank you again for all the events that you put on. Thank you, Steve, and your team and Board members. Know that you all have input into these events. And so in the communities too, there are different events that are happening that's gonna be taking place. Thanks so much. And the proclamation, it is really, you know, we even recognize the Native American veterans. You know, we all come from, you know, come from a veteran's family. And the Veterans Day is gonna be coming up. And just recognizing our own veterans. It's just not Native American veterans, but all veterans. And every day, we have to appreciate who we are. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. And actually, and to the 11th hour to actually refine that proclamation. I think it came out wonderful. So very good job of working on that. And I'm really looking forward to a very good, sound proclamation.
Yes, we thank Miranda for that. Thank you.
And and I love the pair of them up there too. Looks great, Arena and Miranda. You did a great job. Really appreciate that. So it looks like I have a supervisor question. Go ahead, comment.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Arena and Miranda. Really appreciate you reading the proclamation. And for the proclamation, certainly, we do stand in solidarity with the indigenous people here in northern Arizona and Coconino County. And I would like to in particular acknowledge and appreciate my two colleagues, my two Dene women colleagues, both Vice Chair Lena Fowler and Board Supervisor Judy Begay. These are two exceptional Dene women. Each of my colleagues here on the Board of Supervisors certainly bring unique perspective. And representation is very important, and it matters here for Coconino County. Certainly, we are all enriched because we have these two strong indigenous voices here on the Board of Supervisors. So it's wonderful to have this proclamation and to recognize my two supervisors who bring the very strong Dene voice here to Coconino County into our Board. Coconino County has always been and continues to strive to be a strong partner with tribal governments. And I look forward to continuing to work alongside these tribal governments as we recover from COVID-19. Certainly, many indigenous folks have suffered the brunt of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we all need to work together to solve the issues of continuing inequities that exist here in our country and certainly here in Coconino County. And I also want to acknowledge that we join the indigenous people in protecting and preserving our public lands and our sacred lands. I certainly applaud President Biden's action on Bears Ears and the Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument. And certainly also to support the passage of the Grand Canyon Protection Act to stop uranium mining on our our public lands and on the sacred lands and the homelands there of the Supai people at the Grand Canyon. And I want to thank the Coconino County's Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council for their work and advocacy here in Coconino County. Miranda and Arena, thank you again, and really appreciate this proclamation and bringing this forward. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Horstman and Supervisor Bassman.
Well, thank you. That's a tough act to follow, Petrie. But I would also like to acknowledge and recognize our colleagues who are on the Board, who represent indigenous issues, and and just very grateful to Miranda and Arena for bringing this proclamation forward so that we can recognize indigenous peoples and and recognize this month. I just wanted to add and kind of throw out there that, you know, proclamations are great, but we need to follow it up with actions and and show how we are acknowledging and respecting native peoples and continue to do so and advocate for for different issues for for indigenous peoples to fix some of the inequities that have historically happened in this country and also in Coconino County. And so again, I really appreciate the proclamation and and want to acknowledge and and thank all those folks in the county, county staff, the Advisory Council, and and our partners in the community, organizations like NACA, and some other organizations that are out there supporting indigenous peoples. Just want to say thank you for all your hard work and and continue the fight. There's always gonna be issues that need to be addressed, and and I'm really pleased and honored to be able to be part of an organization that helps acknowledge and acknowledge that and takes the lead on that. And so I really hope that that this is more than just a proclamation, but but a call to action, and that our actions will reflect the words that we're putting out in in this proclamation. So thank you.
All right, and I'm keep watching the screen to see if we get Supervisor Begay back. But it doesn't like, it looks like she lost service. So currently, during this item. However, you know, just to follow up, you know, as we see in our mission statement that we celebrate our many cultures, and this is a great opportunity in particular to celebrate our Native American communities. And and as noted by my teleboard members, having two Native American women that certainly are not timid, are willing to come up and and really speak about all of our issues and include many cultural components as we make decisions to represent our county, who we are, all the diversity of who we are, and all the very important cultural components that others may not take up. So I really appreciate the opportunity to work together with my colleagues. And I want to thank, well, obviously, Miranda and Arena for working on the proclamation and reading the proclamation. And Erica, along with the whole litany of folks that you can see are in the background, that'll continue to put on events for the week. So thank you all. I look forward to it and I encourage everybody to participate. And so with that, our next item of business is that we have our consent agenda. And a consent agenda or items 2 through 10, there are items that are routine in nature. We may have seen them in work sessions, or they might be a renewal of a contract. Instead of taking eight separate motions or nine separate motions, we'll take a single motion unless there's a desire to separate an item on the agenda. So I turn to the Board to see, are there any items that the Board members would like to separate? Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, I would. Number four, please.
Yeah, good. I always got a comment if we didn't separate, but if you're separating, good. Okay, others? Not seeing, I mean, then I need a motion for us to approve the consent agenda with the separation of noting the separation of item number four. Supervisor Horstman, you want to wave in your hand?
I will so move.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. I have a second. My Vice Chair Fowler, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
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 Oh, all right. We have Supervisor Begay back. Welcome back. All right, so that's a 5-0 vote on the consent items. Then we have item number four. I'll turn to Supervisor Horstman. And it looks like we have County Manager Bruce, Steve, Alessa.
No comment.
Okay. Okay, good. Go ahead, Petrie.
Yes, and I know Rose Winkler's joined us too, and she may want to say something or not. But I just thought it was important to remove this for consideration and discussion and to acknowledge Jane Nicoletti Jones is retiring from her position as the Chief Deputy County Attorney. She's been with the County Attorney's Office since 2007 and has been the chief deputy for the County Attorney's Office until 2016. And that's a very important, difficult, challenging, and an all-encompassing position. So I want to acknowledge her hard work and her dedication to the county and the county attorney's office, and to thank her for that. And to wish Amon Barker all the very best in assuming the chief deputy position for the County Attorney's Office. We certainly look to our county attorney's office for the legal advice and input that's so helpful for us and everybody else here in Coconino County. So thank you, Jane, and certainly welcome, Amon.
And I'll go ahead and follow comments. So and and also, we have Rose up on the screen. I'll reach out to Rose as well, because she's a peer of all those mentioned, as well as serving under our County Attorney Bill Ray. But I've, I've had the virtue of having some in-depth conversations in the past year or so with with Amon. And I just see a well-rounded individual that Bill has chosen to put in place of Jane. Jane, you know, served a very important piece of business, very hard position handling the criminal side of the Attorney's Office, and really appreciate that how she worked towards developing the professionalism within the Attorney's Office. So also recognizing Bill Ray for his wise choices in individuals. Unfortunately, we don't have Bill here. He's, he's on other business. You know, I'm sure he would be certainly willing to speak to us otherwise. But Rose, I'll turn to our civil attorney, Rose Winkler.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, Board members, for your comments. I'll certainly take those back to to Bill and Jane and Amon. You know, I can, I can certainly speak to say that, you know, I've been able to work. I mean, Jane's been here for for quite a while, as Supervisor Horstman indicated. And I've worked with her closely, certainly for the last five years, as she's been the chief deputy. And she's been wonderful to work with, and we're absolutely going to miss her in the office. And Amon, you know, Amon joined the office a little bit before I did, in the same year, back in 2010, I believe. And, you know, he has certainly grown to become quite the leader within the office. And, you know, I think everyone really looks forward to him taking up this position and and continuing that leadership and growing further in that leadership. And so we're certainly excited for the transition and happy to wish Jane well in her retirement. And then again, I'll certainly let everyone know all of your comments as well and share that with the office.
Thank you.
I'm muted again. Thank you, Rose. So I'll turn to, actually, let me pause. You again. Thank you, Rose. So I'll turn to, actually, let me pause. Other board members commenting. And seeing other comments, I'll go ahead and turn to Supervisor Horstman for a motion.
Yes, hi. I would like to make a motion recognizing the appointment of Ammon Barker as the Chief Deputy County Attorney for the Coconino County Attorney's Office.
I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Begay. All in favor of the motion? Vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, congratulations, Ammon. Look forward to all your good work in the future and that of the Attorney's Office. So, the next item of business is item number 11. We've finished the consent item. Now we have a discussion of possible action items. This is a consideration of possible action to approve the issuance of the Industrial Development Authority of Yavapai County, Arizona, of hospital revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $450 million as requested by the Northern Arizona Healthcare Corporation. And it's associated with the adoption of the Resolution 2021-48. And so initially, I believe, who am I turning to on this? I probably haven't listed here. I'm turning to Rose. I thought I was going to Rose, but.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. And real quick, before I say anything, I want to check with Lindsay to see if Brandon Kavanaugh has joined the meeting yet.
No, he has not joined the meeting yet.
Okay, well, I can certainly, I guess we have a couple of options. One, I can certainly, you know, provide the board a little bit of background on this. But Brandon had intended to join as he represents the Coconino County Industrial Development Authority and certainly has more specific, you know, background as to that and as to the rules with regard to the IDA. Alternatively, if the board would like, we could certainly move on to item 12 and give Brandon a little bit more time to join.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, Steve. Yeah, and I would, yeah, I would suggest that. It'd be important, our representing attorney, and I'm sure he's usually here, so we can go ahead and do that. So, we have item 12, and this is a presentation of possible action to approve the declarations of rabies quarantine area. And it's a unique circumstance that comes up periodically each year, almost each year on this. And we have, we have Kim Musselman to present initially on this, Steve.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we'll be bringing over Kim Musselman, also Sabrina Kelly, and also Eve Walters. If we could transport them over to panelists. That'd be great.
I'm not sure Eve was going to be.
They're on the attendee side, so we're just pulling.
Okay, okay.
As we speak, I'm over. So it's just like magic.
There we go.
Okay, so Kim can tee it up and then turn it over to our staff with your permission of your chair.
Please. Kim?
Good morning, Chair Ryan, Supervisors. I'm actually going to turn this over to my Deputy Director Eve Walters to give a brief introduction and then turn it over to Sabrina Kelly, who is going to provide the presentation to the board and explanation. Thanks.
Good morning, Chair Ryan, members of the board, County Manager Peru. I'd like to introduce Sabrina Kelly, who is the Program Manager for the Animal Management Program at Health and Human Services. As a note, as of December 26, Sabrina will have been with the county for 20 years. So I do want to put that out there. Sabrina is also the rabies expert for the northern region. So she carries two hats and big responsibility. So, today Sabrina will be presenting for your consideration on possible action, the request for a declaration of rabies quarantine. And I will turn it over to Sabrina to give you the details on that.
All right, Sabrina.
Good morning. Thank you, Eve. Good morning, Chair Ryan and members of the board. So Eve, if you want to go ahead and pull up the presentation. Perfect. Okay, so rabies in Coconino County. All right, let's go to the next slide, the agenda. So the agenda is going to be the history of rabies outbreak in Coconino County, current rabies situation and the mitigated mitigation efforts and recommendations of possible action. Okay, next slide. So to give you a little history of rabies outbreaks in Coconino County, in 2001, we had an outbreak within our skunk population. We had 19 skunks that tested positive, seven bats, which totaled a number of 26 animals that did test positive for rabies. In 2009 and 2008 to 2009, we had an outbreak in our gray fox population. We had 14 foxes, six skunks, one ringed tail cat, which totaled 21 animals. Okay, next slide. So in 2001, we asked the board to approve the declaration of rabies quarantine. We had the United States Department of Agriculture, the Wildlife Division, that stepped in, which will now be here after referred to as USDA, that initiated a trap vaccination and release. Within the 2001 mitigation with what USDA did, they actually hired permanent employees that remained in Flagstaff and they conducted studies on basically the movements of skunk in their home range within Coconino County. We also had NAU Professor Ted Thimer that, along with the graduate students, assisted in this research. They basically wanted to gather data and just kind of see what our movement was within the within our skunk population over the next several years and stuff to give us a better understanding of how rabies is spread throughout this population. Okay, the next slide. So in 2008 to 2009, this was a bit different. We had the county issue a declaration of quarantine for 2009 with the agreement that the quarantine would extend it to 2010 and 2011 based on the USDA recommendation for effective rabies control. This was very important that we did this over the three-year period. What was different about this one is residents were asked to keep all domestic pets inside. Because what we did is the USDA provided oral rabies vaccine packets that were distributed by hand on land and also they were distributed by airplane aerial drops. And the reason we wanted the domestic pet owners to keep their animals indoors is because we wanted the wildlife to eat the rabies packets, not the pets. The quarantine area during this time was quite large. We basically started in the city of Flagstaff and it fanned out from the city of Flagstaff in a 20-mile radius. Vaccine packets were distributed by hand, like I said, and then by airplane in outlying forested areas. This was an effort by the USDA. They funded it 100%. They also kept employees up in this area that, so this, this was also an oral rabies drop. It was also, they tagged vaccinated and released, excuse me, for a second. Thank you. We also trapped vaccinated, tagged the animals, released them. We did follow-up trapping. We, meaning I assisted with USDA. About six to eight weeks after that, we retrapped animals and we tested their titers to see if they were actually building antibodies to rabies, which they were. So this was a little bit more involved in this, like I said, spanned it over a three-year period. Okay, the next slide, please. So why does the county need to declaration of rabies quarantine? The declaration gives USDA Wildlife Services permission to trap within the areas of concern. This includes private properties and state land. If the county did not provide a declaration of rabies quarantine, the USDA would have to go house to house to get permission from individuals to trap within the area and then also work with the state. So this just gives them permission to go ahead and move forward with the rabies quarantine and to go ahead and distribute the oral, I'm sorry, go ahead and do the trap vaccination and release. Which is the next slide. So basically, what happens once the declaration of rabies quarantine is approved? Press releases provided to the media outlets posted. We also will post on social media with details regarding the quarantine. Signs posted in the areas of concern regarding trapping activity. USDA will attempt to make contact with property owners. All traps are clearly marked with the USDA label indicating the numbers to call with concerns and basically kind of a brief explanation of what's taking place. Contact numbers for questions are made public or publicly available as well. The USDA Wildlife Service activates the trap vaccination and release team to collect nuisance wildlife within the designated area for 90-day period. All contracted trappers will euthanize any nuisance skunks trapped in the in and around the Flagstaff area. So basically what this means is Game and Fish has licensed trappers. We've already put this into, we, I should say, Game and Fish has already put this into motion. The reason being is that we don't want to be relocating any animal that's potentially could be sick with rabies. So, we want to, in the meantime, between last week and until USDA gets this up and going with the trap vaccination release, we didn't want to be relocating a potentially sick animal that could be infected with the rabies virus but isn't actually shedding the virus so that they're not showing any symptoms of the virus yet. So that's why Game and Fish went ahead and put this into effect. Euthanized skunks will be tested for rabies in order to collect surveillance data. A USDA staff member will remain in Flagstaff area for one year to vaccinate any nuisance skunks that are trapped by contracted trappers after the 90-day trap vaccinate and release period has passed. So they are dedicating an employee for a year after that because we don't want to continue to euthanize skunks if we don't have to. Okay, next slide. So the rabies quarantine areas, if you look at your map here, you can see it's the city of Flagstaff surrounding areas, which would include Fort Tud Hill, Flagstaff Ranch Road area, Creekside Drive area, Quintana Drive area, and then Mount Eldon Lookout Road area. So you can refer to the map there and that'll show you the area that they're looking at wanting to do the trap vaccination release. So this is just showing you the partners that we're working with. Of course, the United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Division, the USDA, Arizona Department of Health Services, Arizona Game and Fish, and the city of Flagstaff. So, recommendations of possible action. We respectfully ask the members of the board to approve the declaration of rabies quarantine to take effect November the 2nd through February the 2nd of 2022. So at this time, if the board has any questions for me, I'm more than happy to ask them and to answer them, sorry.
Yeah, this is an opportunity. You can see many of the areas that we want to read to, but from a public health perspective, why it's very important, but an opportunity to ask questions here.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So is this just within this region? I don't ever hear about like rabies outbreak anywhere else in the county. Seems like it's just a Flagstaff area. What's the happening in the Flagstaff area that there's rabies? Seems like more often reported here.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Fowler. You're absolutely correct. It's because we have a heavy population of urbanized wildlife, meaning that we have a lot of heavy concentration of wildlife that are within this urban area of Flagstaff. So, it's easier for the rate for the virus to spread because we do have such a high population of, you know, the skunks, the gray fox and what have you. So it, it does have a tendency to break out within the, the city of Flagstaff because of that. Back in 2001, when we had the outbreak with the skunks, we did have skunks that were testing positive in Kachina Village. And what had happened is those had been relocated. They had been trapped as nuisance wildlife and had been relocated out to Kachina Village. It's the same thing in 2008 and 2009. We had some foxes that were out in the parks area as well. That's why that's that fanned out so far from the city of Flagstaff out the 20-mile radius to cover that. So, but you are correct in that it does typically start within the city limits just because we have a high population of, of urban wildlife. So, that's why it usually starts within the city limits.
Thank you. I think the people are doing within the city limits.
I was going to say, you be careful there, Vice Chair Fowler. There you go.
You caught that one.
I have my rabies management hat on that I got from back then. All right. So, other board members, questions associated with this?
Sure, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Just curious, so there hasn't, has not been any transmission to humans at all? Or has, have there been any cases of human transmission?
Thank you Supervisor. No, there hasn't. I am constantly dealing with calls from physicians from the hospital and surrounding healthcare providers. They basically, we do have individuals that are exposed to wildlife, mainly waking up with a bat in their house. I know back in 2008, in 2009, we did have the gray fox that did, it did chase people. We had a few that chased people that did make contact. We've had them attack domestic animals. So what they're calling to ask me on behalf of Coconino County Health and Human Services, do we recommend the post-exposure prophylaxis, which is the rabies series? So, we, we deal with it on that level. And thank goodness, the rabies series and the H-Rig, the human rabies immune globulin, works very well. Also, it's very easy for animals, I mean, for individuals to get their, their pets vaccinated. That vaccine works brilliantly as well. Nothing has changed. It has not mutated, knock on windows. Let's hope it never does. So, it does work. So we do have individuals that are exposed, yes. But they go through the series, thank goodness. So, and it, and it does work. So, it keeps them alive.
Great, thank you.
All right, any further questions by the board on this item? Okay, and so, let me. So it is in action. So we need an action to approve the declarations of the rabies quarantine. Would anybody care to make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion. So move on to items that's being discussed.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Begay in declaring the declaration of the rabies quarantine area. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Supervisor Vasquez. Any discussion? No further discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Fowler.
Good, thank, thank you for providing an update and just how important it is to just be aware of rabies and just how our county and other partners are working together to make sure that it's safe in this region. And thank you so much. Thank you, Kim, to all your staff and everyone that is involved and all the partners. Thanks so much. Appreciate the education.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
After board meeting comments, member comments, I would like to make another comment, please.
Oh, you bet. Okay, just I'll follow up. Hey, Sabrina, well done. Really appreciate all your work. You're always doing a great job out there. So, thank you for everything you're doing, as well as the rest of the team that you have out there, Kim and Eve. Thank you. So, you know, really critical for the sake of public health and safety, as well as for those that have pets out there. So, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, on behalf of my dog and everybody that I know, we thank you.
And still get your pets vaccinated, thank you, please. That'd be very important. We have a lot of people that don't want to take advantage of that. So, Steve, go ahead.
Just appreciation to Sabrina. It's been good to work with you at least for the 10 of the last 20 years. So it's going to be back and know that you're back. You're here still. And so, I really appreciate all you've done for so many in the county. So, it's good to see you again. Thanks.
Aw, thank you, County Manager Peru. I really appreciate that.
Steve works better than County Manager.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I really appreciate that a lot.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's just my computer, but I'm having a very hard time hearing Vice Chair Fowler.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's some technical difficulties, but it's, it's low.
Still coming across kind of weakened and a muffle.
Yeah. We can, we can make out your words, but they are muffled, they just sound, you know. Okay. Okay, in the meantime, Okay, in the meantime, uh we just to note that we can go back to item eleven, we we do have uh Brendan Kavanaugh, our uh our. Legal side of the IDA, but we'll go back to Rose to uh introduce the item.
Thank you Chair Ryan, um yes, I will, I'll very quickly hand it over to uh to Brandon. But as you know, the uh Coconino County has an industrial development authority, um you know, that authority uh has its own board. To uh review requests for for bonds, um but that the Coconino County Board of Supervisors does have certain obligation to review and approve. Items that are approved by the IDA, um this one is a little bit different, uh and I will, I'll go ahead and let Brandon um address that. And then I believe we have um uh Mr. Andrew Borders here as well, um who who can also provide some additional um explanation as to the the actual bond. Being requested and um and and what that's for and and what that means for for Coconino County. Uh, so I will uh refer over to uh Brandon, uh there he is, all right, thank you.
Hello, everyone, thank you Board Chair Ryan and and Supervisors. So yes, uh as uh as Rose has stated, this one is a little bit different, uh so for for anybody that has a presentation.
Hey, Brandon, hang on a second, I need us to go back to item uh number twelve, I failed to call for the vote. Uh, and and uh uh Bauer Lindsey, can you note uh who made the motion and who uh seconded that item?
Ryan, this is Belle, um I'm glad to, let me see here, it was a motion made by Supervisor Bagay and seconded by Supervisor Vasquez.
Okay, so I need to call for the vote, all in favor of that motion, uh vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. And that's the motion in the declaration of the rabies quarantine, uh my apologies, uh I should have done that, okay. Uh, thank you, very important we do that, thank you Belle for noting that, uh Brandon, uh sorry for the interruption, uh go ahead.
No, no problem at all, that, thank you, uh so we usually come in front of of the uh Board of Supervisors asking for uh bonds that the Coconino IDA has approved. To then in turn be approved by the Board of Supervisors, uh because while we as the IDA are in fact a separate legal entity. Because our board is appointed by the Board of Supervisors and not elected uh under federal tax laws and and related issues. Our board can't be the final approval, and so any bond that the Coconino County IDA uh wants to move forward has to come through the Coconino Board of Supervisors. Uh, so as Rose noted, this is a little bit different uh in the fact that this is a bond issuance that is actually being handled by the Yavapai County IDA. However, the bond project is located in Coconino County, uh it is the four hundred and fifty million dollar uh Northern Arizona Healthcare uh new campus bond. And so the Coconino County IDA in this situation uh only approved and authorized our office to hold what's called a Tefra hearing. Uh, which is a a tax notice hearing basically uh on bonds to be issued, so uh we have done that, uh we did that back in September. Uh, and we did, uh we did not have anybody uh participate in the meeting, which is not unusual. And we provided our minutes uh to Mr. Borders in his office as bond counsel uh for NIH working through Yavapai County. Uh, now normally I would then give a presentation uh regarding why the the county IDA feels that that this project uh should be approved or and and why our board approved it. But in this situation, since we're not the ones uh really in charge of that, I I will need to defer more to Mr. Borders to give you more of the background. Uh, and information on the project that that we don't have, as as there isn't actually an application through us, we we, as I said, we've only done the Tefra side uh of the matter. Uh, so with that, I I would uh turn the uh the floor over, if I may, uh to Mr. Borders.
Well, hello everyone, this is Andrew Borders, I'm partnering with UTAC Rock here, and and apologies that I uh I can see you, but somehow my camera is not allowing you to see me. Um, so thanks for having us and Brandon, thanks for the setup there, that was well done. And to reiterate what Brandon was saying is the the hospital bonds will be issued through the Yavapai County IDA. And the federal tax rules, the IRS requires that a host Tefra be held in the jurisdiction in which the project is located, and of course, that's uh Coconino County. So that host Tefra meeting was had, and then what's in front of you today is the authorizing resolution that gives your stamp of approval for those bonds to be issued. Uh, again, they will be issued through the Yavapai County IDA, and of course, the the payment obligations are all those of NIH. Uh, so that the county itself and the county IDA for Coconino County have no financial or other obligations with respect uh to those bonds. But we do appreciate you helping facilitate this with the process and the host Tefra in today's resolution. I do see Mr. John Cortese, who was able to join, he's the uh treasurer of of NIH. Clearly, this is a very important project to the community, the community at large, the the financing aspect of this is four hundred and fifty million dollars. Uh, that we intend to issue in the first quarter of next year. Um, and we're going to do that for a public market offering. Mr. Chair Supervisor, we're we're happy to take any comments or questions that you might have. About the project or the financing or anything that we can do to help you.
Well, you first, uh before we uh go to uh questions, I'll provide an opportunity for uh Mr. Cortese to uh comment if you'd like.
Uh, yes, good morning, uh Chairman Ryan, thank you for the invite. Uh, I don't pretty have any other comments other than at this time, the total amount of financing is anticipated anticipated to be four hundred and fifty million dollars. At this time, we're anticipating issuing that in two tranches of debt. An initial three hundred and fifty million dollar tax exempt offering fixed rate bond. Uh, sometime in first quarter, as Mr. Borders indicated, and then a second tranche would be a uh hundred million dollar tax exempt variable rate issue. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Cortese, uh understand the importance of uh your pursuit of this. So uh this is an opportunity for the board to ask questions, uh one question that I'll I'll go ahead and just uh pause for a moment, Mr. Borders. One of the primary intent of running this to the board, it is the Industrial Development Authority, most of the work is on your end. And it's more of making sure that uh you you've reviewed uh this item uh for appropriateness. Uh, as it's uh as these bonds are set up, so that uh you're making sure that they're presented uh legally in the appropriate fashion. Could you speak to that just for a moment, just note uh that you have?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we can confirm the same, and most of that, of course, is going through, all of that's really going through the Yavapai County IDA. And this is exactly that, Mr. Chair, where it's to section one forty-seven F of the code of the IRS code requires that we come before your board. For your stamp of approval and and that's why we are here today.
Okay, thank you. All right, turn to the board members, see if we have any questions.
I just a question, I think you answered it and I apologize, uh and I'm just kind of underscored, I think, the question you just asked, Chair Ryan. So this is going before the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, or has it gone before the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors as of yet?
Um, yes, it has gone to the Yavapai County Supervisors and we we have their, it's a two-step approval, and we have the first step and we're working on uh the second step. And we expect no issues with that.
It is a two-step process because you it's going to be in two separate asking for um the res uh for the bond, is that correct?
Well, that's a great question, and their their process is a two-step process, but we're going through uh now to get the full four hundred and fifty million. Um, and we're working with the their IDA to see if we need an additional approval in two thousand and twenty-three, but we're optimistic that we can get it all approved upfront.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? If not, uh this is an action item, uh uh in action to approve the insurance by the uh Industrial Development Authority of Yavapai County, Arizona. Uh, of hospital revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty million dollars. As requested by the Northern Arizona Healthcare Corporation, and that would be an adoption of the resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-eight. So I need a motion to do so, Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, obviously, this plays a huge role for us here in Coconino County and affects our residents here in Coconino County. So with that, I would move to approve the issuance by the Industrial Development Authority of Yavapai County, Arizona. Of hospital revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty million dollars. As requested by Northern Arizona Healthcare Corporation and as set forth by the adoption of resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-eight.
I have a motion by Supervisor Horstman, I need a second.
And second?
I have a second by Vice Chair Fowler, uh and a close third by Supervisor Bagay in there. Uh, but uh I'll go ahead and uh call for the question, all in favor of the motion, vote aye?
Aye.
Uh, actually, I need uh, I didn't hear any ayes out there, uh Supervisor uh Vice Chair Fowler, uh and Vasquez, yeah, I didn't hear Supervisor Bagay.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And Vasquez, did you uh support this?
Aye.
Okay, uh so we have a unanimous vote uh by the Board of Supervisors, uh everybody was on mute that time, we had to confirm that, so thank you. And and I'll just note, so uh definitely uh just uh noting that Northern Arizona Healthcare has been such a uh critical. Uh, partner and part of our community, uh understanding you have uh uh very ambitious uh objectives. Uh, we wish you well uh with this and uh and thank you uh for the opportunity for us to uh help you move forward on this.
Yeah, Chairman Ryan, and thank you Supervisors, on behalf of Northern Arizona Healthcare.
All right, thank you John, okay, um next item of business is we did do item number twelve. Uh, it is uh eleven o'clock, we have NACDA queued up, but I'm gonna pause for a second, I want to, yes, that we take a a five-minute break, a five-minute break for everybody. That can't get away from the screen, and we'll come back with uh our presentation uh by NACDA or Mathline. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
So I'll check in with uh Val Lindsey, uh do you have, I see Kate out there. We have, uh, hey Kate, we have Matt Mine queued up. Is it just you Kate, or we're gonna have uh?
It's just me tonight.
Okay. Not just you Kate, it's it's you, you're here as well. Okay. And I actually, uh for the sake of the board, if you could queue up with video, I know Judy can't, but others, if you could, just so I can see that you're here. We're just taking a minute here, could. All right, there's Lena, double checking, I know Judy's in and out, so we'll just see if she's. I'm not seeing her up there. Okay. And she could be out of range, what's going on, so I will, I I think what we could do is uh just reconvene and continue with our work session. So we're on to item number thirteen, uh for the sake of the record, this is a presentation discussion. On the annual report of Mountain Mine and an update on the operations and future goals regarding transportation services, and I'll turn to Steve first.
Um, Mr. Chair, as you indicated, it's a pleasure uh to have Kate uh join us today to present an update on Mountain Line. Uh, of course, a little factoid, did you know that Mountain Line was originally a county program that was created in the Community Services Department? Many, many years ago, and so uh we we always want to acknowledge where we came from, and we've had humble beginnings. And so we always want to acknowledge where we came from, and we've had humble beginnings, and now it is an award-winning million-passenger enterprise that has been absolutely phenomenal in its activity. And when we look at, you know, it's simply that, getting people where they want, where they need to get to. And so again, credit to Heather and to Kate and all the senior staff, but more importantly, to our folks that really are the persons behind the wheel that make it happen. So with that, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Yeah, with a humble beginning, but Steve, the blue bus, and Joan worked for you.
That's right. It was Pine Country Transit.
Yeah, and Shelley.
Even years and years and years ago, this was during the old community of the Action Days, it was the Turtle, Tortuga. This was like back in the mid-'70s. So it was a blast. So anyway.
A humble beginning.
Rocking down memory lane like a couple of old guys here.
I was just thinking, this is the first year that I haven't been the alternator or the designated person. So I miss you guys. Well, Kate, rather than keeping up with the nostalgia here, we better turn it over to you and let us know where we are today.
Thank you so much, Chair, members of the board and manager Peru. I just learned something. I've never heard of the Tortuga. So I'm going to have to do some research on that, and you'll actually see, I've ended my presentation today. Mountain Line just celebrated its 20th anniversary as the Mountain Line Fixed Route Bus System. So I'll share a couple snippets about that at the end. But very much appreciate having the opportunity to be with you all today, update you on what's happening at Mountain Line and some of our programs, and just go over some of the specific services that we offer for the county as well. So I will jump in with sharing my screen here. Great. Okay, I believe you all can see my screen. Is that correct? Great. And I do want to acknowledge that Heather Domlin is joining us watching on the webinar today. She is our CEO, but hasn't been able to attend the presentation itself. So she is with us.
Chair Ryan, this is Val Oliver. Quick, Heather Domlin is an attendee, but she needs to accept my invitation to be a panelist. She's promoted.
Okay, and I'm not sure if she.
I'll text her. Thanks.
Great. And I've got the presentation, so no worries if she just stays in.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, and confirming you can see the PowerPoint, correct?
Yes, we can.
Well, jumping right in, I wanted to start off, of course, with a little bit about where we are currently in relationship to COVID. So you can see with the chart in front of you is our ridership over the years, along with our cost per passenger trip. The green line trending upward up until 2019, when in 2020 we hit COVID, you do see it drop. However, still provided nearly a million trips last year on the Mountain Line system, down from 2.5 million trips the year before. And we are starting to see those numbers crawl back up. There was a short period of time where we did cut services when it was essential trips only. We were running weekend service levels, but happily have been running full service for over a year now. And we are, with NAU back in session, are definitely anticipating these numbers to be much higher for FY 2022. But overall, we fared fairly well through COVID. We were the recipients of some cares and ARPA funds, which has really helped shores up, allowed us to not have any layoffs during COVID. And despite having declined ridership, have still been able to provide this important community service for people who needed it throughout the time period. Jumping right in with a little more background info to set the stage for the county services that we offer. The chart in front of you is our funding chart with all of our funding sources involved. And you can see there that FTA, or the Federal Transit Administration, share of funding is over half of Mountain Line's funding sources. And that is matched largely by the City of Flight Staff Dedicated Transit Tax. But we also have some other funding that comes in. We compete for federal pass-through money from ADOT. Fares obviously make up a portion of our revenue. And then we do have other revenue sources, such as what the county contributes to Mountain Line every year. So looking at how we expend these funds as an organization, nearly 72% going to our fixed route system and another 9% going to the paratransit program. You can see a couple small slices on the pie, if your eyes are very good, for the county taxi program and the van pool program. Planning includes some of our capital projects, so you can see that's another large portion of the overall expenses of Mountain Line. But taking a little deeper look at the county's portion, you find two programs. Our van pool program and our county taxi program, which I will delve into a little bit further. But you can see the majority of funds going into maintenance and operation of those programs, as well as administration for those services. Diving into what are these two programs, the van pool and taxi programs? The van pool program is a commuter service that's offered to anyone with the origin or destination within Coconino County. It is a carpool program in which we subsidize a lease of a vehicle, which includes many benefits that people don't think about when they carpool, such as insurance and maintenance, wear and tear, you know, snow, we put snow tires on in the winter, all those things. So it's all included. We write a grant to ADOT every year for competitive Section 5311 funds, which support rural transit systems to offset the cost of that lease and subsidize it for people. Over the years, we've been pretty consistent, having about five to seven vans on the road. We do have capacity for more than that and are always interested in finding ways to expand the program and new partnerships. But I will show some performance measures here, and you'll see that's fairly consistent. The flexibility of the program's really great in that it is anyone with an origin or destination, they can travel long distances. But we tend to find the reason the program hasn't grown more than this yet is that people do have to be willing to make travel choices with other people, schedule those timeframes, et cetera. And that is, of course, always harder than just being able to take your car whenever you want. As I said, this program's been pretty consistent for a number of years. It was not impacted by COVID, the way the fixed route system was. Very much our vans stayed in service. The people continued to ride to their employment centers. We do have a number of these vans that go to medical facilities in Winslow and Tuba City. So I think that's one reason we saw some of those steady numbers. But the program was largely not impacted by COVID, and the number of vans has stayed the same. Looking at the county taxi program, this is a program that we provide to people who qualify for paratransit. And the qualification for paratransit is not having the functional ability to ride the fixed route system. The program's boundaries coincide with the metro plan region. So we're capturing areas like Cachina Village and portions of Donnie Park in the service, but it is not throughout the entire county. The way it works is we subsidize taxi rides on, or somebody can just order a taxi essentially, and be able to take that trip. They can get up to $300 a month, and they pay a 20% fare. And then they really have total flexibility about how they use those funds for ground transportation services. You may recall, probably four or five years ago now, this program was very popular and exceeding its budget. We have done some things to help manage the demand and the cost in this program, reducing the service area boundary, but then also providing this new system of flexibility. And that's, that's worked really well. It's a very popular program. People are excited about it. You can see it's dropped a little bit through COVID, but it is picking back up. It is, like I said, a fairly popular program. So I think we're down about 26% from pre-COVID numbers. Looking a little bit at some performance measures that we track and trends over time, you can see there that the van pool program actually had an increase in the total number of trips provided over 2018, down a little bit from 2019. Cost per trip was up a little bit as we did that. However, overall, really good. There were about 40,000 miles driven in van pool vans on county roads. So, you know, we think that's a really great service. In the county taxi program, again, you can see there is that dip in ridership down to about 650 trips from over 900 in previous years. Costs are going up a little bit per trip, but overall, people are given total flexibility to use the service however they want. And so they may just be picking, taking longer rides. We may also see, there's likely also been an increase in the cost of a taxi trip as well, though a lot of it is just that the program has been restructured, and that's why you see those changing costs. So those are the two county services. I wanted to talk a little bit about some other things we have going on at Mountain Line, just in general that are broad. And the big one being Flight Staff in Motion, which is the update to our five-year transit plan. We do a transit plan every five years, talk about new services. This year, this is what we've branded it, and we've been very excited about the outreach that's been done, some of the feedback we're seeing, and then how to move forward, and it will guide us in how to move forward from here. Our board weighed in on highest, on some of the highest priorities they had for the transit plan update. And you can see the two things that really rose to the top. We're targeting areas with the highest ridership potential with the fixed route system, and then also really looking at ways to support transit-dependent populations. So that's driving a lot of what we're doing within the plan of those two things. Everything else on the list is still important and comes as a part of having a transit system, but those two really being the focus of what we're doing. We've been doing quite a bit of public outreach at this stage. We don't have any recommendations at this point, still identifying what the issues are and looking at a wide range of opportunities that exist to try to address service issues. But you can see the large portion of the pie here is expand the bus service coverage. So that's going new places with the bus system. You can see frequency is up there at the third largest, as well as the increase for the span of service. So that's the hours that we operate, being the big components people are looking for. With, you know, another portion of the pie, a lot of other amenities that we can offer, or smaller issues. Digging a little more into where do people want to see that expanded coverage, that big portion of the pie? You can see the number one thing there is service outside the city limits. We hear that pretty consistently in most plans that we do. I think people really feel that the lack of services of the fixed route system outside the city limits. It is a challenge for trying to figure out what to do in a cost-effective method for trying to address that. But we have been brainstorming some potential ideas. One is to provide a fixed route or fixed routes throughout the city. That's the traditional bus going out to areas like Cachina Village or Donnie Park. The issue with this solution is it is quite costly. People like the idea of a bus coming, however, the reality of what can be afforded is often hourly service or just morning and evening service with a couple runs. And that becomes a solution that's hard for people to work into their lives. So it can sound very good, but the cost to do frequency well into outlying areas and make it convenient is a tall order. Another idea we've kicked around is the idea of kiss-and-rides near the end of routes. And a kiss-and-ride is what we call something where two people may carpool in together, and you drop one off on the side of the road, give them a quick kiss, and on they go. So the idea being, you know, maybe out West 66, there could be a spot where it's safe for people to pull over near the Route 8 line, drop people off, and then people might be able to take Route 8 to their final destination. So it's not, people would still need an opportunity to get into town, but trying to make it convenient for people to transfer to the bus once they are in town. Recognizing that a lot of people, once they've driven from Belmont, may not stop and park and ride completely to get to their end destination because they've made it so far in the car, that far. So trying to create options for families or groups of friends to carpool and then transfer to the bus. And we are, as of yesterday, we launched Mountain Line Go. This is our first attempt at a micro-transit service operating like Uber and Lyft, in that you can hail the service through an app. We have a pilot program happening with the Huntington Corridor, which is not conducive to fixed route service. And we're going to see how it goes. If this micro-transit pilot is successful, maybe there's opportunities to do this in areas of the county where people could hail, you're getting smaller vehicles. You're not just running a bus back and forth. It's hard for people to use. It's trying to bridge that gap. So we're very curious to see how this transit pilot goes in the next couple of months. And then we're also just interested in exploring more of the non-traditional paratransit programs. Thinking is the core, if the core goal of serving these areas really trying to get to the people most in need, or is it just trying to serve the general public? So there might be other opportunities to look at expansions of the taxi program or other new and emerging technologies that might meet the needs of the most vulnerable. As far as how do we fund some of this, that is the big question. There is some Section 5311 funding, that is FTA funding, that serves the rural areas. It would be possible to apply for some operational funding through ADOT. It is a competitive program. There are a lot of rural areas in the state that are seeking that funding. However, some of the surface transportation reauthorization language going through the federal government right now provides increases to these programs. So there could be opportunity to take advantage of some of those increases, should they pass at the federal level here soon. I do want to note that they all require a local match commitment. And so you can't just get the money without having local dollars to draw them down. Moving on to another big topic facing us, besides the fact that was Flight Staff in Motion. Obviously, we've been having a lot of conversations with Northern Arizona Healthcare regarding their move towards Fort Tuthill. That is an area we currently do not serve with service. We appreciate the Board of Supervisors weighing in on this topic for us a couple times. It is not a service that we're prepared to fund with our existing revenue sources. We have plugged it into our fund balance, and when we do, we're not able to cover it without going below our fund balance requirements. And so we are looking for assistance to provide this service, which we believe is a necessary service for this community of the hospitals to move. Our professional recommendation is that service levels to a hospital should be every 20 minutes to make that convenient, to meet the needs of people. And on the chart in front of you, you can see some of the costs associated with that, estimating about 1.4 million a year for service at a 20-minute service level, and about $5 million in capital requirements for new bus stops and new buses to run that service. So we've been having a lot of conversations with NIH and at our board meeting about how we are able to partner to make this happen. There are some things Mountain Line feels like we can bring to the table. Spare, the spare bus, which is a requirement of the Federal Transit Administration. We believe we can work in replacement buses over time. We can, we're very good at writing grants for capital improvements. So our core issue is really finding a way to fund the operations of the route. And of course, the other big topic is the Downtown Connection Center, which we're very excited about. This is our largest capital project, our number-one need. The rendering in front of you is what we're going to take to the Planning and Zoning Commission here shortly and seek their approval. It will go to the City Council, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've done our best to try to balance all the uses on the site. You can see there is a civic space there, as well as the potential for future parking along the north side of that. Our core mission, though, really is that DCC building that you see over on the west end of the property, as well as the bus plazas. We're excited about the opportunity to redevelop the whole site. We believe it really maximizes the benefits for everyone in the community and tries to balance all the asks of the property. So, and with that, I have a couple renderings, which are just exciting to see of the building. So this is the general idea of what you would see looking to the west from the bus plaza. So that is the main entryway. We want to be focused on the bus customers. But also, we've been thinking a lot about how the building looks from Milton. It really is a gateway into the downtown area. So trying to make it look great from that angle as well. So you see this rendering here. So we're still working through the concept design and with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll be hiring on some final design teams here shortly to take those all the way through the construction. And we hope that we break ground next summer on the building. The bus space, maybe a couple of years out, we're working with the Army Corps of Engineers on what's feasible for timing of the bus space. And then with that, to take us right back to where we started, I mentioned it's our 20th anniversary. And then with that, to take us right back to where we started, I mentioned it's our twentieth anniversary. We had a really fun campaign on social media, looking back at some of the start of Mountain Line on October thirteenth, two thousand and one, with some fun posts up there. So there's a bunch more, if you want to take a look and see all the things that we've been reminiscing about. Although I definitely need some more information on, was it the Tortuba? The pre, pre, pre-pine country transit system. So that's all I've prepared, but I'm happy to go back to anything and answer questions.
All right, bring it back. Actually, our board member, I believe, is Supervisor Pascas at this point. You know, I'll give a chance for all the board members to ask questions, but provide the opportunity if Supervisor Pascas wanted to provide any additional comment as we start off here.
Sure, thank you. I really appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate being on the Border Mountain Line and watching how, how the, the, the bus line has developed and the plans moving forward. It, it, there truly has been some thought in, into, and conversations about how to expand service beyond the borders of Flagstaff, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the attempts to, to see how we can partner with the hospital to provide service, but without taking on the full responsibility as Mountain Line itself, without input by our partners to make it happen. So I'm excited to see how that develops. I did have one question. I noticed on the slide that you showed the, I believe it was the vans and the, the, the paratransit, that I noticed that there was an equal amount or near, close number in ridership from last year to this year, but the cost per trip doubled. What's that about? Why did that happen?
Yeah, a couple, I think there's a couple of factors going into that. In the van pool program, we, I think, had a, a couple fewer passengers in each van, but their flat lease rates. And so the cost per trip, or every person in the vehicle, was a little bit higher because it was divided amongst less people. I think that's what's happening in the van pool program. In the county taxi program, that one did increase as well. I think there's a couple of things there. One is that likely the cost of a taxi trip has gone up during COVID, just on the private provider side. But also, we're providing more flexibility to riders and how they book trips. So they may also just be booking longer trips. And we don't have a, a lot of data around what trips they book, we just have a total number. So, for example, if there are a bunch of people in Chena Village now using the service to go out to, let's say, Sacred Peaks, that would be a very expensive taxi trip to take. And so it could just be, what are the users of the program doing? And yeah, we don't get a lot of data out of the program the way it's run, besides the cost per trip and the number of trips that are provided.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. Again, I just want to say I really appreciate the team and all the hard work that goes into, to making Mountain Line such a great service for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, and I probably want to kind of weigh in a little bit on some of the dynamics that we kind of wrestle around with. You know, as you, you saw, you know, one of the biggest requests for to go outside the city, but structurally, you know, from a legislative perspective, financing is not set up that way. You can't designate outside the city in a particular zone, unless it were a county-wide initiative. And then that begs the larger question of, you know, how do you provide service for the entire county? For that, so we constantly wrestle around with, the city has the capability of running a revenue component that the voters have supported within the city boundaries, but we haven't had an ability to go beyond. You know, thanks for, maybe there's an opportunity in the future to, you know, to provide that in zones rather than just county-wide to achieve that objective. But currently, we don't have the legislative authority. I, I do, I do have a couple of questions that, you know, one thing is, just quickly, how many vans do you have rolling with the van pool right now?
I think that we have six vans operating currently. We tend to fluctuate five to seven, but we have capacity to grow to about twelve.
Okay, and so that's, that's always one of, that's one that can go outside city, but can we get enough people that are active in it? And, you know, incrementalism, you know, we grew the system by incrementalism. Similar idea of to run a bus out to communities costs a lot of money. But if you start in baby steps with park and rides, the kiss and ride, I like that idea. But there are elements that hopefully we continue with our own land planning, that we provide parking opportunities outside the city in our communities, where people could commute together and get to these key spots, which would be good, and/or use the vans for it. But one note that I, you know, I was kind of interested in, when you get into the broader system, how frequency question has gone down and the coverage question has gone up. And that's been an age-old debate, which if you provide more vans, but you don't have the frequency, you don't have, usually don't get the ridership. You really need that frequency as well to go along with it. So that was an interesting one. The micro-transit pilot might be a way of growing it. So I'm curious to see how, you know, what happens with that. On the Northern Arizona healthcare, you know, understand definitely will be, you know, if you think of everybody that'll be using the healthcare, providing that opportunity, the difficulty would be, unfortunately, you know, use my opportunity of the moment, last election, the transit system was denied. There was a last-minute effort, that people wanted to suddenly force everybody out of the car, and therefore you should defeat all the transportation elements. And the casualty was they defeated the transit piece. So until there's a new revenue component, it's hard to add to additional routes out there on this. So it would make sense in the future that Mountain Line would eventually explore an initiative. I know that there is support, if you look at the polling, that usually occurs associated with this, within the community, to find that funding. And the last piece would be just as known, the other piece of cost is fuel. It's just pretty extraordinary right now. I can see that having implications with what you are. I kind of did my run-on sentence for you. There, Kate, actually, let me get the board members, you can always respond to me here or another place. But other board members, questions or comments? I see Supervisor Horstman.
Yes, thanks, Kate, for the update. I really appreciate that. And, you know, I get questions all the time about what's Mountain Lion doing for Northern Arizona Healthcare's expansion? So I really appreciate the update, also the comments of the chair on that. The Downtown Connection Center, I sat on the FDBA board, and of course, that was such a big part of the, what we were trying to get accomplished. And so it's great to see that moving forward. And, and I assume there'll be some commercial space then, available in that Downtown Connection Center?
We just have a small space right now, about a thousand square feet. One of our concerns is that our procurement rules wouldn't allow us a lot of discretion over who was to rent that. And we are nervous about the idea of, say, bringing a Starbucks downtown and what that might mean for our reputation. So we didn't go too big with the commercial space for those reasons, but there is some opportunity.
Okay, very good. So, and happy anniversary. I mean, some of us certainly have lived in this, in this community long enough to remember that there did not used to be a Mountain Line bus. There was no public transportation. And what an incredible difference it has made for our whole community and really to revitalize our community and, and provide transportation, public transportation throughout. So I would love to see it expanded more, and I, I know the chair kind of explained some of those concerns. But still, I'd like to see it as we move forward. So, and thank you, and happy anniversary.
All right, others, so thank you, Trish, others of the board.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead Supervisor Gay. I think you're alternating on this, aren't you?
I've been going in and out, but I'm, I jump back on. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And certainly, we have a lot of people that are in need of transportation services. And I just want to thank Mountain Line for doing a, a good job and thinking about expansion and other opportunities, you know, to better serve our, our people out there. So I just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Gay. Supervisor Gay serves as our alternate to Supervisor Pascas. Board of Mountain Line. And then Supervisor Fowler, any comments?
Yes, Kay, can you?
Yeah.
All right, okay. I've been trying to fix my volume here. So, thank you, Kay, it's good to see you. And I'm still working on, I still want to work with you on the van ride in the, in the northern, northern Arizona area. And, you know, a number of years ago, we're trying to do a partnership with the other transit systems. I don't, Hopi Transit and Navajo Nation. Where, where are you on that? Are, are you all still meeting every once in a while? I can facilitate those meetings again. I facilitated, started them and was facilitating those meetings for a while, as well as Page Express. You know, these, these are the services that are provided throughout Northern Arizona. I know Navajo Nation has stopped its bus services to, in this region. So, which is really what was, is concerning. But apparently, they're, they're working on it again. So just want to ask you that question, I have some more, but you can answer that.
Yeah, I think, as, as you mentioned, I think some of the other transit systems throughout Coconino County haven't been quite as fortunate during COVID, and haven't been able to continue service the way Mountain Line has. And so, you know, in a full transparency, there hasn't been a lot of communication or, or collaboration about what to do next with these partners, because I think they're very much focused on just trying to get service off the ground again and up and running. Our Transit Association Conference is next week or in two weeks. And so we're hopeful that we see them there, can reinvigorate some of the conversations. But I think we're always open to partnering. Additionally, MACOG's taking a stronger role in some of the inner-city services. They did a transportation plan just pre-COVID that highlighted some of the priority inner-city services that they would like to see as well. So I think there's definitely opportunity for us to restart some of those conversations when we all see each other in the next couple of weeks.
That, that's good. You know, this is an area, and I, once again, you know, Flagstaff in this region is very fortunate to have all these resources readily available and lots of planning happening, lot of coordination, lots of partnership off, outside of Flagstaff, beyond the peaks. You know, that's where, you know, people, if they don't have a transportation, it's not, you know, there's not a bus that they can just walk down the ways for. And so, and then the van ride, we've been trying to maybe get, try to get some of those services up and running, but we haven't been able to really get that together. So, you know, I think continuing to really look beyond, if there are services for, well, there are, I would think the only one that is, is the van ride that is possible to go outside of the city limits, then we need to work on those some more. So, and then, you know, Navajo Nation wanted to to park its bus there in the yard, and I think they were allowed to do so. When they get up and running again, I'd like to make sure that that partnership is there to make sure that there is a smooth transit. I like your, your facility that is in the, that transfer. If there's any way that Navajo Nation, when they are up again, to be able to do the transit there, or what do you call that? I guess it's.
The Connection Center?
Yes, if you use it, that'd be really good. They were not allowed to stop where the, the, your buses are stopping. They were, they were stopping in the parking lot, and people were running across just to catch the right bus across. So if there's a way, you know, there is a way. So the, as board members, if you all really look into that and staff to make sure that there is a smooth transition and with all the other services, because they're, they are also providing services to the citizens that we all represent, the residents out in the communities. So when it comes through again, I will try to, I will organize another coordination meeting to make sure that we are, are all know what our plans are and see how we might be able to work together. I think that would be really good. So thank you again, and thanks for your service. It's really great that City of Flagstaff is really well-cared-for, and there is a lot of resources here for all of the residents that live in, in Flagstaff. There are really a great coordination happening, new hospital going up, lot of nonprofits. There's a lot of opportunities here in, in Flag, there in Flagstaff. But we need to make sure that we're trying to do the same for the rural communities as well. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair. And, yeah, actually, that Connection Center, before anything else, get that thing built, you know? You've got a long journey, you've had just about everybody that wants to be a part of it, but you definitely need to get that one built. So, in twenty years, what a great opportunity to have that success. That would be absolutely wonderful. You know, it should be noted that, you know, Kate's the face today, but we have Heather that's, you know, the CEO out there, working very hard. But you have a whole team of people that provide professional services that are behind you out there. And so we appreciate the opportunity where we can be partners with you, knowing that you have your own independent function as well on that. Anything else that you want to follow up on there, Kate?
No, I'd definitely reach out to Supervisor Fowler to follow up on some of those items. And just so you're aware, because it's come up a couple of times, we are actively exploring the option to put another measure on the ballot, either twenty, twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-four. It's definitely something we're considering moving forward within the future. And we just appreciate the opportunity to present to all of you. It's been a while, and it's wonderful to see you all.
Absolutely. And we continue to work together, so thank you.
Well, thank you. All right, well, thank you all on that. And then, just a note, that concludes our morning. Actually, we're, we're a little ahead of schedule. That, that's, that doesn't happen often. So that's, that's fantastic. I'm finally getting the job done on the clock. These, anyway, so we're scheduled to come back at one fifteen, and what we have, our presentation and discussion regarding long-range planning update for the Flagstaff Regional Plan, doing a part from with Timberline Area Plan, and the proposed renewable energy requirements. That'll be our topic at one fifteen. For that, and so I don't think we have much time to really pull off anything else at this point. You good, Steve, there?
No, it'd be good to, to start and then break, and we'll come back at one fifteen, sir.
One fifteen, everybody back. Good job, everybody. We'll see you back there. Let's see. Trying to go through all the names here. Okay. Because she's been going in and out and not present in the meeting regularly at this point. You know, I think we should just go ahead and proceed. Let's see. And I'm sure she'll be enjoying, joining us. Okay, so next item of this.
I'm here.
Oh, you are. Fantastic. All right. So we got Judy in there. So we have our board members at this point. So let's see. Next item of business, we're on item 14. This is a presentation and discussion of long-range planning update on the Flagstaff Regional Plan, the Doney Park Firm with Timberline Area Plant and the proposed renewable energy ordinance. So I'll turn to Steve first, and I'm going to assuming, well, it looks like we got Melissa out there. Oh, Jay's out there too.
Yeah, we've got a good grip here, Mr. Chairman. We are here this afternoon to present, as indicated on the agenda, updates on long-range planning update for the Flag Regional Plan, the Doney Park Firm with Timberline Area Plan, and the proposed renewable energy ordinance. And so we have, Lucinda's the deputy manager in that area. We also have Jay Christelman and of course Melissa Shaw. And so I'm going to turn it over. Lucinda, did you want, did you want to add any comments? I don't see her popping up. Jay, are you ready to intro?
Good morning, County Manager Peru and Board of Supervisors, Jay Christelman, Community Development. I was just going to let Melissa introduce the topic herself. It's a continuation of what we presented a few months back that we didn't get to finish, but I would like to thank the board for approving the term limited FTE for our environmental quality position. So just wanted to extend the gratitude for that. So thank you. Melissa?
Thank you, Jay. Good afternoon, Chair Ryan and Board Supervisors. I will go ahead and start sharing my screen. And did that appear for you? Okay, that should have shown. Let me know if it's not showing to you.
Melissa, it is showing. It's showing in kind of dual mode. It's showing the before slide and the after slide. So.
Oh, okay. Let me redo that.
Can you get into presentation, please?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Sorry, I had to run and get a pen. There we go. All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for making time for this update. And we are here to talk about three initiatives that the Community Development Department has been working on. And the regional plan, the Flagstaff Regional Plan update is the first of those. Sarah Decter from the City of Flagstaff, I believe she might be joining us. I don't see that she has joined yet. But if she does, then Sarah will be here to help answer questions about that. We will also be talking to you about the Doney Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan update and then the proposed draft of the utility scale renewable energy ordinance. So with that, we'll just jump right into the Flagstaff Regional Plan update. And I believe in April, on April 28th of 2021, there was a joint City Council Board of Supervisors meeting to hear an update about this project. And as you all know, the Flagstaff Regional Plan is a shared document with the city and county. So it covers the, the Flagstaff Region, which is the FMPO or the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization boundary. That's our transportation planning boundary. And so the city adopted this in 2014. The county adopted this as an amendment to our comprehensive plan in 2013. So it's time now to update that. And just as a refresher, from the April 28th Joint City Council Board of Supervisors meeting, we went over the regional plan 2045 update schedule with you. We talked about the proposed public participation plan, as well as roles of the public, the staff appointed and electric, elected officials during this process. And we also talked about the endorsement and adoption process for the city and the county, because they're, they're different for each governmental entity, and we'll talk about that a bit more in a second. We talked about resources that would be needed to conduct the update. And then since April, on August 11th, we also held a joint city and county planning and zoning commission study session where we, the city and county planning and zoning commissions heard a similar update and provided feedback. The, the planning commissions were enthusiastic about the process. They're very interested in being involved. They, they gave a pretty wide endorsement on the process that was outlined so far. And they want to be continuously involved in, in the rollout of the update. So this next slide showed you the schedule and the process that was introduced to you in April. And, and this hasn't changed. We are right now in phase one. And it's called Get Curious and Gain Understanding. And phase one is a pretty important part, because what's going on behind the scenes is getting organized. There were over 150 data points that went into the, the current regional plan update. And we are looking at those. We're analyzing additional data points that need to be incorporated for the new update. We're also looking at emerging trends and issues and learning how we can incorporate those into this next round. The P2 inform bar means the public participation plan. We are, we are beginning to launch informational meetings and get the word out about the update process. And in terms of creating art and generating excitement, there was a grant that was given to this regional plan update by the Flagstaff Arts and Beautification Commission to involve art early in the process, so we can have people involved and think in different ways about planning for the future and how to create a vision for the plan. So that's pretty exciting for planners to actually be able to draw art and draw on art to help inform a process like that. Phase two is, once we have all the data updated and start to have a good sense of what we're, what we're looking at on the ground in terms of existing conditions, that's when we start to craft the vision and the goals and the process. So this is a circular process, because as we go, we will be writing and then continuously updating the writing process as we get more information through public participation. During phase two, there won't, the goal is right now not to have a formal advisory committee, but rather have a multiple sources available to get public input, including different types of citizen panels, citizen groups, that would then inform the process and get ready for phase three, which is when we would request a formal advisory committee be appointed to review the draft, to provide comments, to get that legal review portion completed, revise the, the draft prior to preparing it for the formal public hearings, which is phase four. And you can see that this would be starting in fiscal year '22, going through fiscal year '25, about a three and a half year process. Talking a little bit about the adoption phase and phase four. The city council will need to adopt it on a regular public hearing agenda. But then you might recall that with the city process by state statute, cities and towns must take their planning documents, in this case, it's the general plan for the city, to a citizen initiative. So it would be on a city ballot and the, and the residents of the city would be able to vote on that. The county is not required to follow that process. So the county would then look at that document and we would take it for to you, the Board of Supervisors and the Planning and Zoning Commission for adoption as an amendment to our comprehensive plan. So that's the current proposed schedule and process for this update to the regional plan. And so what's been going on since April and where we are now in phase one, which is generating excitement and gaining understanding. Again, we are working on getting those 150-plus data sources updated and analyzed. Just to jump ahead a little bit in this slide, what we're doing with those, then we are summarizing those in what we're calling snapshot papers and complimentary webinars and presenting a real intense summary of those that are publicly available. They'll be, they're held most Mondays, skipping holidays. At noon, 15-minute presentation followed by 15-minute question and answer. So anyone is invited. There's a sign up. There's a registration required. And we'll talk a bit about the website where we're hosting the regional plan information. So we're researching the emerging issues and trends. And with that, then we are host, we're highlighting that information with these snapshot papers and webinars. We have weekly coordination meetings with the city and county staff to work on all of these, these papers and webinars and the public participation portion that's going on behind the scenes. And we're also coordinating messaging and outreach with other major plan updates, because as you all know, NAPDA is in the process of updating their five-year plan. And you may also know that Metro Plan as well is beginning to update the regional transportation plan. So these efforts are all going on at nearly the same time. And as well, we're currently working on the county area plan update with Doney Park Timberline Fernwood. So we're trying to avoid some conflicting and confusing messaging by talking to each other as agencies and putting out some, as best, best we can coordinated messaging, so there's not confusion in the community about what they're responding to. And we will then continue to work with, with you, the Board of Supervisors and the Planning and Zoning Commission as, as more of the process unrolls. We are giving monthly updates to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. So with that, then, I know that was a pretty fast overview of the regional plan update process, but we can stop here and go to any questions.
And I'll note for your sake, Melissa, because you've been presenting, Sarah came in just as you were starting there. So she is here.
Thank you very much. I'd like to pause for a minute then and introduce Sarah Decter. She is the City of Flagstaff Comprehensive Planning Manager. And we are supporting Sarah in this, this major effort. So Sarah, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that information?
Well, Melissa, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right. Turn to the board. Questions or comments? I'll probably, I'll go ahead and start out while we, now I have, because we have a presentation at the Dolly Opera House, so you gotta stick up if you want to comment. I can't see everybody. I just want to note that, you know, sometimes, I don't know, with time, I get a little more ornery and all that kind of thing. But I think you guys are doing a really good job. This is a nice layout for what you want to do. The engagement with the community is a critical piece. And then how do you bring that information back? I think you're outlining that really well. And, you know, obviously, we would want to be kept up to speed as it progressed, and I'm sure you would be doing that. There are my quick comments on it. Other board members?
Yes, if I can, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to partnering with the City of Flagstaff on this important process and on Flagstaff's regional plan for 2030. So this will be new for me to do, so I really appreciate the process and outlining it for us. And look forward to working, working with you on it. So thank you.
You know, actually, along that line, Melissa, I would suggest that you and Sarah, you know, periodically, for the sake of board members that haven't been through this process, just, you know, all of us want to see what's going on, but it wouldn't hurt for just, you know, making a conscious effort to, you know, bring, bring the information to see what's going on, provide that opportunity for them to ask questions. You know, in a relaxed manner, you know, at each's leisure, but here are some board members. It's a long process, so there's the opportunity. I would suggest that. Let's see, Huronima, did you have questions or comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and the layout. I appreciate learning about the process and seeing where we're, we're headed along that process. I'm glad to see phase one, we're, we're, you know, asking those questions and looking to line things up with the Metro Plan and the bus lines, you know, long-term plans. So that way we can, we can really have, have growth in a planned way that, that is most beneficial for our community. So thank you for your, all your time and effort. Now, I've gone to several of the area plan meetings, and I really appreciate all the hard work you put into it. So thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And then just a couple items to note. I think you covered a little bit of this, Melissa, that just, this is an amendment to our comprehensive plan. You know, the city still retains their jurisdiction within the city, the county, outside the city boundary associated with it. But where there's a direct and indirect impact, it makes sense that we coordinate together. That's been the virtue of having this Flagstaff Regional Plan. I'll turn to Judy. Any comments or questions?
Not really. I have a hard time on muteing, but I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And things like this really helps me to understand, you know, when something has to be brought up for voting or whatever. So keep up the good work, and I am willing and there to support any endeavors that you're, you're, you're planning and, you know, wanting, and it's going to take all of us to make it happen. So thank you very much.
All right. And then Vice Chair, Lena?
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Melissa. And, you know, this is always an interesting process. And I know that when, are you having in-person meetings on this, or how is it all being handled?
Thank you. I couldn't find my unmute button. Right now, everything is virtual. And the webinars are, and I, I could go back to that slide, but in the PowerPoint that you received, there is a direct link to the new regional plan website. And in that, then, you can click on that and register for the webinars. So those are live, but they are on Zoom. So right now, everything is still virtual, but live on Zoom.
Okay, because I like to attend some of those. It's always, and you learn a lot through this whole process. So that I, I think it'd be really good. Yeah, I see that. So anyway, thank you very much and want to get involved and really see where, listen to some of the conversations that are going on and just the different, different perspectives from the various agencies that are, that are going to be involved. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I would encourage you to go to the regional plan website. And there, if you want to join a webinar, you do need to register. But those are posted every week, and we're continuously updating that information.
And actually, so Sarah, for the sake of meeting, the board does a news chat. But if you could, it looks like you're posting off the Flag Regional Plan website. Could you go ahead and read it out to our board members?
I'd be happy to. The website, if you're looking for it online, is www flagstaff.ez.gov/regionalplan2045. And it takes you to a web map page. So it's all hosted on ArcGIS online on the city's account. The videos are all embedded under the regional snapshot banner. But you can also go to the City of Flagstaff YouTube page, and there's a playlist. And so we're hosting a lot of the electronic material, but trying to keep it in a place where it's easily accessible.
All right. And Melissa, could you just email that out to the board members just in case? Wonderful.
Absolutely, yep.
All right. Okay, that's the regional thing, but you've got more for us here.
Matt, I see Jay's hand is up.
Oh, he is. Oh, there it is. Jay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. and Ms. Vice Chair. Thank you for catching that. I just wanted to real briefly add that Melissa and I were talking about this this morning. That's okay, Mr. And Ms. Vice Chair, thank you for catching that. I just wanted to real briefly add that Melissa and I were talking about this this morning. Our comprehensive plan is going to be coming up due for, you know, it's it's ten year. Renewal. So after the Donnie Park area plan is approved, our intent is to move into. The beginning of the comprehensive plan update process and, you know, these these plans being moved forward concurrently. Is appropriate and important. So I just wanted to share that real briefly.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add, if at any time. Board members would like a one-on-one briefing with Melissa and Jay relative to this. Regional plan or the next two topics coming forward as well, the renewable energy ordinance as well as the Donnie Park Timberline. Area plan, certainly if there's any interest, please, please let them know and and they and we would be happy to sit down and walk through. More detail with you if you have an interest in that. Thank you.
All right. And just to note what. Jay, and that's great. You know, it's really good to take advantage of that. And just noting, East Jay just noted, you know, every ten years, we are required to update our comprehensive plan just as the city is. For the regional plan. We don't have that requirement on the regional plan, but we do have a comprehensive plan. Okay, so why don't we hop to the next one?
Okay, thank you. So the next topic is the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood area plan update. And just as a bit of background. We began in January, working on this in January of twenty twenty. With a committee made up of both supervisor district two and four residents. We've got eleven members on this. Area plan committee. It's comprised of business owners, property owners and residents that were invited by then supervisors Archuleta and Parks. So what they're, what we've been working on is updating the current area plan, which was adopted in two thousand and one. So we have since we started gone through the information gathering and educational phases. We've updated. The, as much as we can, the population and demographic. Information as well as the land use data that we have based the plan on. So the area plan committee has also drafted a new vision for the area plan and they have updated. The existing goals and policies as well as drafted new goals and policies based on all the information gathering that's been conducted. So just that's just a bit of a background. So we had an open house, we'll talk about in a second. Last month and they're in the process now of, rather, excuse me, in September. They're in the process now of reviewing those comments and making revisions. To the policies and the goals based on those comments. So just to go ahead and look at the planning area. You may recall that this is a large planning area. It's approximately forty-three thousand acres. What you see in the green hatched area and the yellow hatched area is actually forest service land. So there sixty-eight percent of the planning area is US Forest Service managed by the US Forest Service. Two percent is state lands and then, so that leaves thirty percent private land within the planning area. There are seven rural activity centers within the planning area and those are shown on this map. It may be a little. A bit difficult to see at the scale, but those are shown at the, where the circles are and they are on Tons and Winona Road and also. Then on eighty-nine going on up north. So this is an overview of the planning area that we're working on updating with the. With the committee. Just to kind of talk a little bit about the vision and these are some some images from around the the planning area. There, there wasn't a vision statement included in the two thousand and one area plan. So this would be actually new. To the area plan and they've, they've modeled their vision statement after our comprehensive plan where it's a four-part. Statement. It covers natural resources, open space, environment, community character and values. Land use, growth, development and partnerships, and then transportation. So this is something that they've worked really early on to develop and has gone through quite a bit of. Review and thought by the committee. And then we did get comments during the open house on the vision statement. And then just to talk a bit about. What we are currently doing. These are some images from the open house that was conducted on September twenty eighth of this year. We had. Probably a hundred and fifty residents attend. Everybody was fully masked, so it was a. A good meeting. It was in Cromer Elementary School. And so we got out of that meeting over a hundred and fifty comments back. We are using. And you you may be familiar with the subscription service that we've been using called Conbeo, where we actually also at the same time. Ran a virtual or digital open house. Where people who could not attend or wanted to comment later could go back in afterwards and post their comments online. So we got about a hundred and seventy-five comments from the open house on the goals, vision and policies. So as I mentioned earlier, the committee is currently in the process of reviewing those comments and looking at how to possibly. Revise the draft vision goals and policies. They've been meeting since January of twenty twenty nearly, well, monthly, on the second Thursday of the month, sometimes twice a month. To get through. Reviewing this this large area plan. And the next step is to draft the plan. We've actually started drafting the text of the plan. Once the committee has reviewed the, the open house comments and reviewed the draft plan, then we'll hold a second open house. And then move into the public hearing phase, which is when you will see this plan again. So here's another view of the schedule. So we are again in the process of. Drafting and updating the vision goals and policies based on the open house comments, continuing to write the plan. The committee will review it again post the second open house. It may be virtual and maybe in person. They will. Make a recommendation as to how we do that. And then we anticipate public hearings and final approvals. Not late twenty twenty-one, but hopefully early twenty twenty-two. It's been a really dynamic process. The, the airplan committee has done an incredible amount of. Very good and at times difficult work. So we, we as staff are very grateful for their enthusiasm and interest in the care that they're putting into this. So. I know that that is, there may be questions, so I'm happy to. To pause again here and talk about the process or the schedule or any other information you might need.
Got any questions, but I probably wanna refer it over or refer to. Our two suits representing the area. First, I'll go to Supervisor Vasquez.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you, Melissa, for the, for all your hard work and the presentation and. And the area plan's been, committee's been doing a great job. The open house was a, was a huge success, got a lot of feedback. And I know we're going in the process of processing that feedback. When is the, what is the timeline for the, the, the hoped timeline for the area plan to be completed?
Going back to, so we are. Optimistically looking for, I would say, early twenty twenty. So the. The committee is going through all those comments right now and. They are carefully looking at revising the goals and policies because they. They are considering all of the public comments and, you know, a best case scenario is that there is. During public hearings that everyone has been informed and everyone has felt like their, their questions have been heard. So that there aren't any late surprises by the time it comes to hearing. But that's what we're hoping for. Yeah, it's, it's been, as you know, from some of the meetings. The committee has gotten deep into some of the the details of the implications of writing policies. So that's been a real learning process for this group to understand how this applies in the future, how it will affect. Land use decisions like rezonings and conditional use permits. And then also understanding how it works with the zoning ordinance. So, you know, they, they are certainly have come. Come pretty far in understanding the responsibility that goes along with drafting a document like this. So they're, they're taking it quite seriously.
And and overall, they're doing, they're doing what we're asking them to do, participating and engaging. So I'm really grateful. To them for, for the, being part of this process and for you to have the patience to go through that process, because. It it can be very tedious sometimes, but it's necessary. So the community feels that their, their feedback has been heard. So I thank you for, for all your hard work. Thank you.
And I can imagine they're bringing passion to the process in that area, which is, they always have, which is good. So actually, and just when you were reading it, Melissa, you read twenty twenty and I'll just say. You have posted early twenty twenty-two. On there. And so just.
Thank you very much for that correction.
Yeah, I'm doing it more for the verbal, for the record, in case Lindsay's taking notes on the record on that. I knew what you meant. Let's see. And we have Supervisor Begay represent the area also. And she'll take a minute to come off you here.
Oh, hello. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Am I on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to thank Melissa and the crew and also the. Chris and them for really proactively and wisely putting a plan together and making sure that all i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And I've been attending some of those meetings and I agree, I really appreciate all the information that they're sharing with us. Anything that we bring up is considered. So that's, that's really good. So I just wanted to. Say thank you to everyone that's been waiting, plus the whole committee there. The committee is very active in it and I appreciate all their time and efforts, you know, in getting this project off the ground and. Making amendments or whatever. So the open house was a real big success and I really agree. I was really fond of everybody there and the way it was set up and how, you know, everything was explained to everybody and. So I'm glad to be part of it. And so thank you very much.
All right. And then follow up with other supervisors. Supervisor Horstin?
Ju- just a quick comment. Just I look forward to the process continuing. Thank you for the update and. I know supervisors Vasquez and Begay will keep us informed as well. So thank you for doing this and. You know, I think it's just marvelous for people in the community to be so involved, take so much time out of their. Busy lives to to be so involved in, in this whole area plan process. It's so important in building community. Maintaining community and of course for themselves going forward within their community. So. It's great to see so many members of the public involved in this. So thank you.
And then Vice Chair Fowler? I'm trying to scroll up. Okay, I'll give her a chance to come up. I'll go ahead. I do wanna ask a couple of questions. Associated with this. So. When we go through planning efforts, there's usually a level of, as noted, people are asking more. Associated with specifics. While we create plans, the, the whole idea is, we know that there will be. There will be changes with time. And so if a change comes in, then it helps to have a plan and process. A piece that every once in a while we get paralyzed with is sometimes people write a plan. To not consider future growth and. And and I'm curious on how the community is accepting that concept or if you haven't gotten it. If you have gotten into that dialogue. Only, it's not the intent to lock everything up so much as, you know, we have characters and community attributes out here and if. If it comes in, you know, how will it match, match up to those characters? So, yeah, surprise, surprise, Melissa. You know I would have something like that sooner or later.
Thank you for that. Yes, Chair Ryan. That has been a very important and I would say. Very engaging topic of conversation with the committee as far as how to address and. Accept change in the community. There, there's a very strong sentiment that many people, both from the survey, we did an online. Survey and, and also from the open house comments, that a lot of people are not wanting to see change in the community. Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood is a very rural. Community, as you all probably know, is very different from Belmont, for instance. So there are large lots of minimum. Size parcels there are one acre and then they're large, they go there. Larger than that. Actually, I think the average parcel size is two and a half acres. So there's a lot of interest in maintaining the existing residential zoning character. With that, though, we have been introducing the idea and a lot, there've been quite a few comments. From the community who are interested in having different services, for instance, transit services. Out there. There's some interest in having more community service, like possibly a clinic, but it's still been a very. Interesting conversation with the committee and with the community to understand how that would look. While they can still maintain their rural character. And there's been some focus on the rural activity centers and what those actually do, how they function. What change in the activity centers means for the community. So change is always difficult. I think that this community, a lot of the, the. The committee members are aware and they want to accommodate. Change, but at the same time protect their, their community character. So that's a big topic of conversation and it will definitely. It, it is showing through in the dread, the vision for sure and the goals and policies. Does that answer your question?
All right, it's, you answered the question with what I thought I would hear. Associated with it. And, you know, it is interesting, though. There's a discussion going on with activity centers. So. The perception of change, well, when the Exxon went out there, people came unclued. They didn't want any part. Now they can't do without it. You know, the garrison's Exxon once upon a time. So it's one of those changes inevitable, but boy, we kick and scream when it happens. So how, when it happens, can we find a way that really matches up well to the character of the community? Is, is a big piece. So it's good to see, you know, that you have, and I was curious about the discussions around the activity center. I, I wanna hold up this meeting, you know, I'll have a chance to, you know, check in with you on offline just to hear about that. But it's good, you know, it sounds like the community's talking about those pieces, even though they don't want change. That is a change that already occurred and. Has transpired. So that's, you know, an evolution of conversation, I guess. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Oh, just, just to follow up. And there have been some very frank conversations and as. As you all probably know, the meetings are still on Zoom and virtual, so everything's been recorded. And some of the, all the meetings are online if anybody's interested in, in getting a sense or for the flavor. Of the discussion during the meetings.
All right, well, good. Okay. So seeing no further questions, I'm looking up. Am I getting raised hands out there? Any follow up? Jay or Lucinda on this one?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the next one is the opportunity to talk about the renewable energy ordinance. And I suspect you're gonna be presenting on that as well.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. And yes, we'll, we'll talk about this one next. And as you all know, we've been drafting this. I'll just jump to the next slide. I do wanna point out that, that, that image on the upper right is an image from Perrin Wood Farm, if anyone's been out there. So. We'll talk about that more in a bit as well. So we've been working on this project for a while. We, and I'll talk about the schedule and the process. On the next slide, but I did want to just kind of quickly go over this. We gave an update to the board, I believe it was back in April. On what we're doing and a proposed outline for amending the zoning ordinance. So this would be in addition to the zoning ordinance. In chapter three, where we, at that, in that chapter. Provide standards for development of special uses. So this would be. provide standards for development of special uses. So this would be a conditional use permit for utility scale renewable energy systems. And we are focusing on solar, wind and biomass facilities in particular. Um, we're also looking to amend, um, the chapter five waiver section, where, and that's where the planning commission has the ability to waive certain standards. So, um, just to get a little bit into detail, some of the new considerations for waivers would focus on audible noise, how collection lines are built, whether or not they're underground or above ground, and also, uh, a phenomenon called shadow flicker. Uh, we're also, uh, with this updating chapter six definitions, um, with quite a few new terms and concepts that would then go along with the draft. And I just did want to mention again that, um, the initiative for this came partly out of the projects that we're seeing come in the door, but also it's a directive, an action item out of the comprehensive plan to develop a utility scale energy ordinance. And we, uh, knowing the projects that were coming in, focus this on the renewable sites. So, um, with that, just to give you a, um, quick update since, uh, your April meeting on this, that we've been having ongoing meetings with the advisory group. And just to talk a bit about the advisory group, it's, it is a, um, a fairly informal group and it's a fairly fluid process. Uh, the advisory group is made up of a real diverse mix of energy developers, uh, county residents. We have, um, people from state lands, from Arizona Public Service on it. We've got, um, a, a real wide mix. We've got, uh, several ranchers, the large property owners, um, as part of this advisory group. So it's been a ver- very dynamic and a very informative process, uh, with really frank discussions. And we've talked about topics like this. We, um, the, the draft has in it, it's modeled, um, similar to our wireless telecommunications facility ordinance where we have preferred citing criteria. Um, we've had some frank discussion about agro voltaics. That's, um, kind of a, um, a hot topic in the industry where, um, developers are combining agricultural with soil. So we've had discussion about that. We've had the biomass industry involved. Uh, they've reviewed our draft and provided us comments as to the standards. Uh, the area highlighted in yellow, so we, we're talking about a visual resource inventory. These are the highlighted lines, kind of talk about some of the bigger topics that the committee has discussed, but also, um, we've learned from this process where we might need to provide additional resources for the county, not just for these types of projects, but in general. So for instance, we've identified the need that at some point it will be very helpful for the county to conduct a visual resource inventory. Obviously, visual impacts of particularly wind projects and as well as solar, um, can impact what our visual resources. So when I think of a visual resource, we could think of, um, scenic corridors, historic roads, national, national monuments and parks. But we don't have an actual official inventory list. So we started to put something together, but that might be something that we embark on, possibly before the next comprehensive plan update. So we have a real good inventory of visual resources in the county. Um, the next line that I've highlighted is, um, preliminary site investigations. And in particular, an idea called pre-cultural onsite survey. And these are, that's more of a concept because the preliminary site investigations are part of this draft ordinance. And what those are, those are preliminary, as preliminary information that will help staff and the planning commission understand how these are being cited. So for example, what we're suggesting that we receive with an application is information about wildlife habitat, vegetation, visual impacts, cultural resources. So we know from the get-go what these sites might impact. Along with that, then we have learned just through different contexts, for example, the nature conservancy, um, got wind of what we're working on and they, they contacted us to share some understanding that they've learned in developing renewable projects. And that's how to do pre-cultural onsite surveys with our Native American, uh, government. So really the, and we'll talk a bit more about this because, uh, we're, we're realizing that this can be helpful to develop some, um, suggested communication methods, do early, early outreach with tribes that may be impacted by projects such as this. So we've come up with some concepts and some basically guidance for developers and how to, how to initiate that early discussion. Uh, wind turbine setbacks is a big topic of discussion with the community. Um, just for context, Perrin Wind Farm turbines are about three hundred feet plus tall. The turbines that were recently approved with the Nextera project are around six hundred feet tall. And we've seen other projects that are potentially coming in with turbines taller than that. So the setbacks then from residential property lines are a very important discussion with neighbors. Um, and so I've got some images to show you in the future, but we, we do have some, uh, our draft performance standards talk very specifically about setbacks. And I just wanted to kind of highlight that for you to let you know that that is a very important topic of conversation. Also, um, as part of this outline, we are writing into the draft how monitoring would be, would work, um, ongoing monitoring of these sites and then how operational, um, impacts operations may occur. So for example, if there were unknown impacts that were discovered during monitoring, we're having, uh, discussion about how operational changes may be needed to, to mitigate some of those impacts. Uh, we're obviously looking at construction impacts to soils and vegetation. And a recent topic that's come up, um, particularly from the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've been getting monthly updates on this, is how to understand cumulative impacts of the project. So knowing that these projects are large scale, um, and covering many acres of the landscape, their landscape scale projects, trying to understand cumulatively what those impacts would be. And interestingly, there is an action item in our current comprehensive plan that speaks to developing and understanding of cumulative impacts primarily for wildlife habitat. So we do have some really excellent tools available to us through Arizona Game and Fish, um, that can help us understand that. But I'll, I'll speak a little bit more about that in a bit. And then, as you know, we've had a recent approval, the Babett Ranch Energy Center Conditional Use Permit was approved in August. That's a combination of solar, um, uh, six hundred and forty acre, one section of, uh, so, solar panel arrays, uh, along with wind turbines, fifty-four wind turbines. So that was approved in August. We're learning a lot from these approvals. We've also, the developer of that site, which is Nextera Energy, they're on our advisory committee. They, they and the commission were very aware in August of the draft ordinance and the proposed standards that were in the ordinance. And so there was very frank discussion, um, about how that project actually tracked along with the appro- with the draft, um, ordinance. So that's kind of, that's a lot, um, I know to absorb. But hopefully then we can talk more specifics about some of these highlighted topics. So just to talk a bit about a visual resource inventory and, uh, we, we have mapping efforts going on. So we, we do have a map that I, you can see a snapshot of on the right, that where we, we are starting to map, or we have mapped our projects, both the operational projects, the approved projects and our pending projects. This map is a little bit, um, deceiving in the sense that when we, we locate these based on just their parcel numbers, it appears that there is a massive, that they coverage massive acres, which they do. But when we actually look at the specific site plan, the actual footprint is much smaller. So we are working with GIS to determine how best to map this based on either a digitized site plan or township section. So it actually gives the more realistic view of the footprint of the project. So that's something that's coming. Image on the, on the left again is Perrin Wind Farm. So, you know, one thing that the advisory group brought up, and the energy developers in particular, said that it would be very helpful to have a list or a map of the county's known visual resources. So we do know based on our comprehensive plan, um, you know, what some of the formalized visual resources are, such as historic roads, scenic roads, national parks and monuments. So we're mapping those and that will at least be a start. There are other ways we can get into much deeper visual resource mapping, but this is something, again, that has come out of the advisory meetings that would be helpful to both staff and to developers, um, and then I think to the whole county going forward to understand visual resources. And let me know at any time if you want, wanted me to stop or if you have questions on a particular topic. Because I'd like to jump into next, this idea of the pre-cultural onsite survey. Um,
Um, Sir Chair?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to jump on all kinds of, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, uh, on the wind turbines, when we approved the, the project, um, out towards, um, Williams, I think that's what this is. We asked the FAA, um, to, you know, people were very, um, were not supportive. The neighbors were not supportive because of the red lights. And, uh, we had, um, in, in our approval, we had a language that we put in there for FAA that anything ever become of that? And is that part of our policy now?
Thank you, Vice Chair Fowler. Yes, the, um, the FAA warning lights are very much a part of the draft ordinance and has been a, um, an early topic of discussion with the advisory group. Um, and there has been some technological changes since Perrin Wind Farm was approved. So, so now the way the draft is written, the, the Federal Aviation Administration requires those aviation warning lights on the turbines and those are now radar activated. So what that means is when a, a aircraft flies within that warning range, those lights come on automatically, but then they will go off. So we have seen data, um, from Perrin in terms of the amount of time that those lights come on. There are some nights when the lights come on, um, very infrequently and not for a long time. There are other nights when those lights are on much longer. And we do know though, that that is due to aircraft over flights. But that is something that the ordinance must comply with because that's a safety requirement from the Federal Aviation Administration. But the improvements have been made since Perrin was approved in that they are radar activated. So they do go off once the aircraft has passed over and they won't be on all night long.
Okay.
If you need more information, we have data we can bring to you.
Uh, that would be great. Um, and then, you know, these, all these projects, the area plans, they, we have, these are great. I mean, this is, um, amazing plans that you're all working on. I'm just thinking that this is a great opportunity for a partnership with NAU, um, with students there. Um, like you have, you have an advisory committee here. I know that at NAU, the, um, the, the Native American programs has the environmental, uh, department and they work on projects. So I'm just wondering, not just, uh, just there, but I know NAU and as a whole, there must be department sourced, um, opportunities for students to get involved, to be able to learn hands-on with, with some of these projects that are happening. There's, um, there's so many that are, that are going on and just such great work. You're a great professor. You would be.
Thank you, Chair Fowler. We have had interns from NAU. We, we don't have one this semester, but that's something that we need to pursue again. And, and we did recently present the renewable energy ordinance to the Tri-Diversity Council. And we are, I am going to connect with the, um, Native American Environmental Group at NAU, definitely because I think they would be a great resource for this. Thank you.
So.
And I'm happy to hear that you're going to be working with tribes too. And that is very important with all of these plants. Not just the renewable, but with the area plants as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Lena, uh, Patricia, you're up there. Did you want to come?
Well, I am out here and I was just kind of listening. I have sat in on a couple of the advisory group meetings and, uh, to basically become more informed on what's going on. Obviously, um, uh, this is going to be a very important ordinance. Uh, you know, it, it's going to, again, what we were talking about with the other area plans, it's going to affect, um, our community going forward and, um, and, and really taking a look at the needs we have for renewable energy. And we have to make sure that when we are addressing all the various concerns that we are in fact promoting our renewable energy and promoting options for, uh, solar, wind and biomass. Uh, and it's hard, uh, and just sitting and taking part in, in some of those, um, advisory meetings with the various stakeholders and groups here in our community, you can see how hard it is and, uh, it is to draft, uh, the ordinance. And, and I appreciate the direction and leadership of Melissa and others, uh, as we move forward on this. So, um, thanks for the update. Look forward to more. Um, I have seen the visual impacts and I saw a little, uh, bit of that with the Babett project. It's pretty interesting. Uh, some of the, uh, um, oh, uh, what the scenarios they developed and I, I guess the optics that they developed and what it's going to look like. So, um, thank you very much.
And, and I know, you know, we're still working through this, uh, this one. Uh, actually, uh, where are your pauses? I, I was hoping to comment, uh, on particularly the visual or ordinance, because that's, that's what I've been wrestling around with since, uh, we went through our initial hearings of other wind farms. And it gets into that discussion, uh, point of, um, uh, not only the wildlife component, uh, but having, uh, uh, you know, there are areas that, uh, wind developed in, that eventually became from one end of the, uh, jurisdiction to the other end, water wall, um, uh, you know, wind, uh, turbines. And, uh, a big piece of, uh, our county is tourism-based. Uh, and the energy component is a critical piece. And I think it's a very important piece. Uh, it, it certainly does weigh into, uh, climate action, what we do at landscape level. It fits into the rural planning areas, uh, for the sake of ranchers. And, you know, what is the, uh, uh, new uh, version of ranching, uh, business, uh, model, uh, that they have. So it fits very well, uh, with that. By the same token, if we're not, uh, taking, uh, an inventory, uh, and approaching it from the cumulative impact, we could find ourselves discovering that, okay, we've allowed them everywhere. I'll use my photo that's behind me right now. You can see an uninterrupted, we don't have a wind turbine in there. Well, you could see that eventually being filled with, uh, wind turbines. So, uh, it is balancing some of our ethos of our community. We certainly want to provide the opportunity and it may, might be, uh, not only aligned with that, but aligned with, uh, uh, both the solar, but more so the wind, uh, more appropriate zones. Uh, but even with that, usually the more appropriate zone where you have wind is a prominent point, uh, that's visual, uh, as well. So, uh, I, I appreciate these questions being asked and the consideration of trying to do that, think about that. Uh, cause I, I hope we can build plans that we find a balance, uh, for each of these, uh, elements. And then, um, along that line, um, the setbacks and adjacencies to communities, that's something to be weighed out. Uh, one thing that I've seen with hearings over time is when you, when you do get into rural communities, people start claiming ten miles from their house is their area of impact, although that's not how it works when you go through land, uh, planning scenarios, but it's an evaluation. I mean, and if it's well, uh, with these type of discussions. But if you're coming up on a community in the setback, it, it is a fair, uh, discussion of, uh, you know, what will happen. I know we have built in our ordinance, uh, you know, dismantling, uh, we definitely want to make sure that we have nice binding documents associated with that. Uh, should there be, uh, you know, bankruptcy or whatever, you know, what is the dismantling plan associated with, uh, if these are no longer being used, uh, uh, associated with that. And, uh, If these are no longer being used, associated with that and another piece along that line, and I'll get you in a second, Patricia, would be I didn't see in what you have flagged, and maybe you'll have a little later, but it's already bubbled up once when you were doing the Dry Lake Wind Farm is military. There are shadow components and order flight components that it's an indirect interface with military. They're not always easy to get feedback, but but that's an element that probably should be weighed out. Or at least provided the opportunity for discourse to occur associated with that. Go ahead, Patricia.
Well, and I wasn't gonna get into that, but since you did, Chair Ryan, you know, it is a balancing act and yet, you know, you always have to give something to get something. And, you know, it's it's never, you're never gonna please everybody. That that's the bottom line. So I think it's going to be important to determine what is the actual goals, what is the actual benefit? You know, how much are we supporting renewable energy and the importance of renewable energy? And then try to balance that in as much as we can for a lot of the factors that you were talking about, Chair Ryan, you know, you know, the the visibility, the fact that we are this incredibly beautiful area and have so many tourists who come here because of the beauty of our of our area and our environment. On the other hand, in order to maintain that beauty and to maintain that environment, we need to make a commitment to renewable energy and renewable resources and sustainability. So it is a balancing act. It's been an incredible learning experience to sit in on and many of the advisory group meetings that have occurred that have so many stakeholders from so many different areas, but you know, ultimately, it's going to be able to, it's going to come down to what are we going to do? What is important? And what are our values when we take a look at renewable energy in this renewable energy ordinance? So wasn't gonna get into that, but since you opened the door, I decided to walk right through it. So thanks, Chair Ryan.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we need the ordinance. It's how can we enable when that how that balance that we have? Very important points. Just, I should probably just quickly check in. We do have additional presentation and Melissa will do. But let me check in Judy or Veronica, did you want to weigh in at all at this point?
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity of going to Perrin Ranch and seeing some of these turbines up close, and it's very impressive. And despite what I might have thought beforehand, it wasn't as visually interrupting as I thought it might have been being out there. And so I just appreciate all this information and I agree with with Supervisor Horstman about the need to have some the parameters and some guidelines so that way it's, we don't, you know, allow too many and then then we're we're kind of taking taking a step backwards. So I I support the moving forward with this ordinance and and trying to regulate these, but also embracing renewable energy at the same time. Thank you.
Supervisor, begat, Judy. So take a minute.
Good evening. I think all the information that I kind of wanted to allude to was brought up by Matt yourself and on Patrice. So I really don't have anything else to say at this point in time, just basically, you know, I think a renewable injury is something we really need to pay attention to. And so that's the only comment I have to make on top of what you guys have said.
Great. And actually, Melissa will continue with presentation and we'll have additional. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you. And thank you for that feedback. It's important to hear this so we can make sure that we're thinking this through as best we can and looking at it from all sides. So and just to follow up on the visual resource inventory, and as you you mentioned, Chair Ryan, there and there are visual simulations that we receive with every project. So that does show the and they do an amazing job. The technology is has really come so far where we get scaled images showing the impacts of, for instance, turbines from certain distances. And just kind of a little tidbit, we have learned through that process that 10 miles is about at the point where the human eye will not actually be able to see a turbine. So you'll see in our draft, we've actually written in that standard. So we're we're using that as a distance from which to gauge, you know, distance from a visual resource, for instance. So that that 10 miles is important to think about in terms of actual be actually being able to see some of these facilities. I wanted to just talk a bit about this idea of a pre-cultural onsite survey. Because these renewable projects aren't likely to have federal requirements for formal consultation surveys. But not all of them will. So if projects are just on private land, then there is not a requirement for the the cultural studies, for instance. So there will be a requirement, you know, if there's any kind of threat or danger to species, US Fish and Wildlife will require the developer, and this is from the federal requirements developing wind wind facilities, that they'll have to study impacts to birds for eagles. But other than that, there isn't, you know, there are formal requirements to do cultural surveys, for instance, on private land. And our current zoning ordinance doesn't require that either. So you know, we have written that into the draft, though, that that is another piece of information that will be very helpful for staff and the planning commission to use to evaluate the sighting of these projects. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the suggestions that we have for public hearing cases is to encourage applicants and developers to seek very early involvement with tribal nations and to build relationships with them to share knowledge, stories, information about these sites that may not be available through SHPO or through formal surveys to actually have onsite meetings. And the idea, though, is this could avoid later challenges and unexpected delays. And this is actually, you know, this was very good information shared with us by the Nature Conservancy and some of the work that they're doing with tribal consultants. So, you know, we've developed some suggested communication strategies with naval Native American governments for public hearing projects. So this could apply to more than just these projects, but to any large public hearing project that may require a different level of outreach. So a supplement supplemental or public participation plan, we wouldn't write this as a requirement into the draft, but we wanted to make you aware of this because there are, you know, some steps that would be that we would suggest to make that initial contact. I know that there is, you know, there there's a view in terms of how communication and consultation with some of the the Native American governments may may either delay a project or throw some more certainty in it, but from the experience that we we've been introduced to from the Nature Conservancy, for instance, and other other agencies, this can actually go a long way to creating really positive and long-lasting relationships and, you know, building trust and really getting these projects information out there early about these types of projects. So I just, I wanted to mention this because we won't build that, or at least at this point, we haven't built this into the ordinance as a formal requirement, but it has come up. And it's been another learning piece that we've gained from this process. So that's really all I had to mention about that. But if there's any feedback, we would certainly appreciate it about this idea and the strategy. So the next slide I have to show is a diagram of wind turbine setbacks. And I'll just take a second to explain what this shows. So so on the left here, if there's a person standing, for instance, on the ground and looking at a wind turbine, this shows the view of an 880-foot wind turbine at a half-mile distance, which is the larger view. And then if that same 880-foot wind turbine were placed a mile from that person standing on the ground. So it just, and actually, one of our advisory group members, that Johnson put this image together for us. He lives near Perrin Ranch. And it was something that the committee has discussed for a while and pretty pretty thoroughly, because the developers are looking for something that is more along the lines of a half-mile, the middle view distance. The the way the ordinance is currently drafted, the requirement is for a minimum half-mile setback from any residential property or three times the height of the turbine, whichever is greater. The property owners, and I think with Perrin Wind Farm, this experience came partly out of that experience, are saying the mild setback distance is obviously less visual impact. You can kind of see from this diagram the way that looks. The interesting thing about the ordinance and where this advisory group has landed is that because the way it's been drafted, the planning commission would have the ability to waive either decrease or increase setback distances for the turbines, meaning that could be customized project by project. So this is somewhat of a discussion that the committee has had, or the advisory group, I would say. It's not a committee, it's an advisory group. That it has been discussed many, many times, but it is a topic that is, people, no one is completely happy as we just heard. The the property owners would prefer at least a mile setback requirement minimum in the ordinance. The developers would rather something less than a half a mile. So the advisory group, we've landed on a half a mile with the understanding that it can be certainly customized out by the planning commission based on input at the time of project review. So I just wanted to show this diagram because this this really does start to help us understand how the very large wind turbines, we don't have anything of this size built yet in the county. I think we can anticipate them coming online. So this visual, I think, can help us understand from a property owner's concern what that impact might be. The next slide I have does talk about cumulative impacts. Again, this is on the left is Perrin Wind Farm and on the right is the APS substation in Donnie Park, the panel is out there. So as I mentioned earlier, there is discussion in the conference of plan to develop a cumulative impact assessment for primarily wildlife habitat. So in addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission has raised this concern. Now that they're they're seeing these, these projects move forward toward their hearing schedule for approval, that they're wanting to understand cumulative impacts for wildlife. I think they're also looking for habitat impacts, including vegetation. And so in the draft, we've got a definition for cumulative impacts that primarily focuses on wildlife habitat, which would include vegetative communities. And then a requirement for asking developers to help us understand a cumulative impact analysis. So this is somewhat in process in terms of exactly how to fit it in to this ordinance, but it is something that that we are working pretty quickly to try to to write into the draft and and have advisory group review of that. So with that, the next slide is is about the schedule and the process. So I will move on to that. Because it's it's something to to think about as we're we're working with the advisory group. And there are some upcoming opportunities as well that I can point out. So again, we began with this advisory group in July of 2020. It's been primarily virtual. It's been all virtual on Zoom meetings, but we started with the technical advisory group, but quickly transitioned into our community advisory group. We have upwards of 20-plus participants at every meeting and well over an email list of over 45 contacts that we we sent to and including the Naval Observatory. They they've been a very active member of our advisory group. So we are meeting monthly. We're doing research all the time between meetings to address the issues that are brought up. And so we actually are getting ready to schedule our next meeting later this month. So we we've also met onsite and well, we met in person with the ranchers, the large property owners, and we've gone out and visited most of our large ranches around the county, including Perrin Wind Farm. We have visited Babbitt Ranch. We've visited the Flying M and the Bar T Bar, met with the ranchers. So ranchers are part of our advisory group. So we're getting feedback from them. There's an opportunity to visit Perrin Ranch there. So there's a site visit. Mike McCully has offered a site visit this month. So we're putting that out there as an opportunity for advisory group members to go and tour Perrin Ranch. We've, as I mentioned before, we're updating the planning commission every month on the progress of this. Some months we have more time with them than others to give them an update. So you can see we've we've been pretty much throughout this year giving them updates as to the progress and status of this project. With you, the board supervisors, your last update on this was April of this year and and then today. So we are anticipating moving forward this spring to have public open houses or an open house and then again, with a target date of late spring in 2022 to bring a draft forward for public hearings with first the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors. So I know this is a lot, the the draft ordinance itself is several pages long. It will cover, again, those changes to those three primary areas of the zoning ordinance, but I can stop here and go back to any questions.
Great. We'll swing back to the board on this and just, actually, just to say, I love this. I think it's evolved quite a bit. The conversations have evolved quite a bit. You know, still these different areas, work our way through it, see where we can go. A question that I have is just out of curiosity. You ever get into discussions of potential zones by chance? Almost as though we're dealing with lighting zones instead of energy zones.
That is an approach that we we talked about early on. So I guess there are a couple ways of of thinking about that. And just for more context, our current zoning ordinance, as it's written today, permits a utility facility as a conditional use permit in any zoning district. So so these projects that have been permitted so far, Perrin Wind Farm and the and Clonera and also Next Air have all been permitted as a what's called a utility facility. And that's the large-scale utility projects. And this then would further refine that term to be specifically utility-scale renewable energy, either solar, wind or biomass. So those have then been specifically defined in the ordinance. So and those are again permitted throughout the any zoning district with a use permit. There there have been other efforts across the country, particularly in California, where the communities have done analysis to determine the best sighting areas. So taking into account different parameters such as soils, topography, wildlife, agricultural lands, economic zones, and narrow it down from there and identify the best locations for these projects to be cited. Given that we were already permitting these as utility facilities, we did not take that approach, but we are trying to cover as many of those topics and those concerns as we can with the studies that were were suggesting be submitted with each application. Does that answer that question?
It's, it does. It's you did have the discussion some on it. I'm still curious about that of potential application in our area, but but we also need to proceed. Sometimes we can always come back with amendments if we, if the dialogue continues, because you start to implement and then there's a cost and effect and it calls for, maybe we should revisit the ordinance to take a look at it. When when we do pass that. Let me, I'll go ahead. Let me walk through the board members, because we are at the end of the presentation here. I'll start with Supervisor Horstman. Did you want to add to your earlier comments or questions?
Yeah, just a couple very small to add to what I said, but you were asking about the pre-cultural onsite survey that Melissa, I think that sounds very interesting. And I know in some of these large ranch areas are near on or near are close to, I should say, some of our tribal lands, I think. uh, some of our tribal lands, I think it's a great idea, uh, just to get everybody on board and everybody talking and input. So I really think that's a great idea. Um, I also look forward to getting more information on, uh, some of our planning and zoning commission concerns. I know this is from G to a CUP, so I'd love to talk with them too and, and, and see what their thoughts are on this process.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Veronica.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and, uh, I, I look forward to seeing this, this ordinance come to fruition. Thank you.
All right, Judy. Okay, for a minute, uh, let me hop over to West Chair Val. There you are.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I had to, um, I really appreciate this presentation. We've been moving in direction, in this direction for some time now. Now it'll be nicely laid out and be able to have an open conversation with these guides and guidelines and, and then, you know, more importantly, and or just as important, you know, communities will know what to expect in their neighborhoods and also, um, and just the companies that are coming in proposing these and making sure there's a coordinated effort that is out there. So I, I want to just thank you for working on this. Thank you, Jay and your team. And we've been moving in this direction for some time. So thank you.
All right, and, uh, and then, uh, probably my, my last one, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm really excited. It's moving forward, you know, it's always been a part of, uh, the desired outcome, uh, to, to move forward with this ordinance gets us even closer, which is, uh, great. Um, uh, you know, other areas to mature, uh, a little bit more, uh, for what you're working on, but you have a good group, it sounds like they put together. Uh, just noting the lighting component, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Lena, uh, you know, that, that spun out of, uh, uh, part of it was putting it in conditions, the other part of it was, uh, um, you know, our new positions, uh, where we do have, uh, uh, that joint, uh, position chair with the city of Flagstaff, or it looks at our dark skies and uh, and a Mark Stento, uh, works on with Perrin Wind Farm as they were progressing with the, uh, uh, tail end of the FAA, uh, implementation associated with this. So, uh, uh, that is a, you know, it's an important element. Uh, we're dealing with the dark skies as well on this. Um, anything else, uh, Melissa or Jay or?
I, I would like just to add a couple of other additional points. Um, you, you all may know that Navajo County does have a wind ordinance in place that's been in place for a number of years. So we have, we have looked at that and, and used that to some degree, um, as a, to, to inform this, this draft, ours looks quite a bit different than theirs. Uh, what you might find that's similar is the decommissioning piece. And that is a requirement when the facility becomes obsolete or something else happens where it's not operational, that's the requirement to take the facility down and restore the site to the, uh, prior condition. So um, Navajo County does have that in place. And I also want to mention something that we've learned uh, going on throughout Arizona, particularly in Pinal County. Um, Pinal County is one of the best places in the country for solar resources. So they have seen a huge influx of applications for these, um, facilities. I think that they, we, we understood that they've had over 300 applications for solar farms in Pinal County. And I do think that they are in the process of developing an ordinance possibly along the lines of the, um, what you were referring to Chairman Ryan in terms of sighting zones. So, um, I have contacted them, I haven't heard back, um, they don't have anything that I've been able to find in terms of a draft, but the developers who have been very active in this process are all very aware and they keep reminding us that that, uh, this, this ordinance draft will be, um, possibly a model for other communities, not just in Arizona, but, uh, throughout the West. We've had contacts from Colorado. Um, you know, state lands, Arizona state lands is, is engaged in our process. So you know, whatever we do end up with and, you know, we can certainly modify going forward, you know, will be potentially looked at. I know when I was doing the initial research for this, I looked at other ordinances. Um, so you know, that's just something to keep in mind that it could be a model going forward for other, uh, communities. Um, yes, and I, I am always happy to, to share other information offline, you know, it's been a very robust process with the advisory group and honestly, I, um, there are a lot of people to thank for their time and commitment and interest uh, that they have, um, given to us as staff primarily and helping us understand all of the potential, um, ways to, to, to design this, um, and you know, looking at it from both the development side as well as the community side and our comprehensive, you know, trying to at the same time maintain the values in our comprehensive plans. So there, there's a long list of people to thank, um, which we'll get into at some point, but yeah, we are very grateful for that input and for the ability to utilize them. Um, for this process, we, we really, it's truly, it has become a much better product and the hope is that by the time it does come to public hearings, they're, they're, we, we hope that they'll be to the most part agreement moving forward. Thank you.
All right, uh, well, thank you, Melissa. And, uh, Jay or Lucinda, did you want to wrap up at all?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't have anything to add. I think it's, it's all been addressed, but thank you for the opportunity and thanks for the feedback.
You're welcome, Jay. Lucinda?
Um, thank you. Appreciate everyone's attention to this. These are very important initiatives, particularly the renewable energy ordinance. The scale and, uh, pace of renewable energy development that we will likely see when the, um, infrastructure bill passes as well as other initiatives that the Biden administration is proposing for climate change. I think we're, we're going to see a lot of focus in this area. Um, and, and we do have some, some great areas, um, and, and it's interesting because solar power is actually more efficient where it's cooler. Um, and so, um, I think, you know, it really will come down to where are the transmission access points? That is the key issue. Is transmission access and, um, if there's transmission access available, I think we're going to see this. I think as we think about this right now, most of these projects have been in very, very outlying areas, extremely rural ranches, et cetera. But as we see development in areas that are closer to, to our communities or more rural residential areas, um, I think we're going to have, uh, you know, we've got to really think about this, not just on those landscapes, but on the other types of landscapes this could occur on, um, very much within visibility and reach of, of communities. So um, with that appreciated. And again, if there's interest, if people, if any of the supervisors would like to sit down and, and get into more of the details, certainly please reach out to Melissa and or Jay and, and we'll set that up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lucinda, Jay and Melissa. Uh, so that actually, uh, we're a little bit ahead of schedule and I was just trying to check in with Steve, uh, are we, uh, uh, take a, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if we could take a, a few minute break, um, to, uh, continue. After the break, we have COVID, Kim is here to do a COVID update. Uh, and then from there we'll be doing, um, standing reports on legislative redistricting and then roundtable. So if we can take maybe a 10 minute break, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we do 10? Give a chance for people to stretch their legs a little bit here or two. So it is, uh, like 2:46, we're coming back. It's, uh, about 55, 56 somewhere in that range.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
There's ten minute breaks are dangerous. You you kind of get see the beautiful temperatures outside.
Those ten minute breaks are dangerous. You you kind of get see the beautiful temperatures outside.
Like like three minutes in the last eight minutes, three meetings in the last eight minutes just in the hall.
Yeah, they go quick. It's the worst kind of samples we used to do in the biotech firm I had were five minutes. Too long to really, you know, be there for the sample. You can daydream but too sure that you could easily miss it. Similar idea. Well, next up, we have the presentation, discussion and update associated with the Coconino County's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Oh, actually, I should just make sure we have all our board members here too. Sol, Patrice and Miranamo, hop up. See if Lena's out there. There's Lena and Judy out there. She usually takes a little bit to get into her pause, but there.
Hey, Ryan. Supervisor Big A is on, but she said her cut out, so she may end up, we may end up losing her.
She's she's in listening phase at this point. All right. Thanks a lot, Lindsay. All right. So Steve, I'm gonna kick it over to you before we go to Kim.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Kim, also I'm here to give an update on our COVID response. You know, the numbers are trending in the wrong direction at this point in time. Kim, of course, is providing some updates and some news, some exciting news in terms of some of the things we're doing outfield. Credit always goes to HHS for all doing whatever they can do. You know, we consistently and every day thank not only HHS but all our health providers for doing all that they're doing to to curb COVID as well as here in the organization. So again, I'm gonna just turn it over to Kim and she'll provide our update. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Chair Ryan and Supervisors. Lindsay, I believe, is gonna be sharing my slides for me, so I'll let her pull that up and.
Can you see it, camera? No.
Yes, but it's not in presentation mode.
Okay, got it. Can you see it now?
Yeah, can you make it so it's just, there you go, one step. Perfect. And you can go to the next slide if you would please, Lindsay. Thank you. So thank you, Supervisors, for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I know it's been a few weeks in terms of a formal update, but have been providing those situational updates to each week and hopefully you're finding those useful to stay in touch with what we were doing in terms of the response as well as all the other information that you're getting and thankfully sharing with all of your constituents as well regarding opportunities for vaccinations, testing and otherwise. So as we get started this afternoon, I just want to point out, as Steve had mentioned, our transmission level continues to be in high. Our incident rate is actually up again even from the week ending 1016. These are for the week of October 17 through the 23rd, where you're at a 354, 353.4 per 100,000. And our percent positivity has also gone up to 8.6%, moving us back into the substantial with respect to that percent of positivity. And as Steve had mentioned, our numbers, you know, are definitely still trending upward, which is not the direction that we want. Interesting note, and I just received this afternoon a report from the state that had put together a graphic across the country in terms of case numbers, and it's interesting waves to be watching right now. If you look at what is the South and Far East, Southeast of Florida, and moving forward, their numbers have gone substantially down. So it's it's like this wave effect that we see moving from east to west. So we'll keep an eye on what is going to be happening over the course of the next several weeks and hope that ours will begin to trend down. You can see the vaccination rates that are for eligible individuals. These are from the ADHS website. Cumulative for those who have been received vaccination, at least one dose of vaccination. So you can see where Coconino County is sitting currently, just despite the fact that we continue to give at least five, well, up until last week when boosters were approved, and and I'll talk more about that shortly. There was, we were averaging about 500 vaccines a week for those who were receiving either, you know, first or second doses. And of course, the Pfizer booster at that time. So of course, as of this last week, those numbers have changed significantly, given some booster doses. And they're about to change even more significantly, given some of the things that have just happened today with respect to ASAP, the committee and some approvals regarding child vaccinations. So next slide, please. Just want to show briefly, like to bring up this each time and let you see the Epi curve from the beginning of the pandemic, and you can see how those numbers go up and down. You'll see that as for the week ending October 30th, which just ended on Saturday, a reminder that we do get some data lag in terms of numbers. It does seem to be down a little bit. Let's hope that it stays that way. We'll see as we get in the rest of the numbers over the next couple of days to firm up the week ending October 30th. Next slide, please. As far as testing, we continue to have an amazing number of tests being conducted, which I again just remind everyone is really actually pretty impressive considering how you compare the rest of the country. We have lots of access to testing. We have people, lots of people taking advantage of testing throughout the entire county. And of course, you know, working with our university, doing some other mitigation type of testing as much as possible. And of course, the schools and other things with the rapid tests and and other resources that are being provided to them. And so you will see on here that 63, over just over 6,300 tests that were completed for the week ending October 23rd. And just as by way of update, the NAU Fieldhouse testing location will be continuing through at least the end of the year and will be open even after the students go on break. They will be open throughout the holidays with some exceptions that I will be sharing with you in terms of the actual holiday days of over Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years. Next slide, please. So as you're probably all fully aware, the booster doses were approved for Johnson &amp; Johnson and Moderna last week. And in addition to that approval, they also approved the option to be able to choose which type of vaccine booster you wish to receive, allowing for that mixing and matching of vaccines. We are currently administering all three booster doses here in Coconino County and at our HHS clinics as well as our partner clinics with PMG. And we'll continue to be doing so. And also each of those locations have the option of the mix and match as well. So just wanted to make sure that you're all aware of that. The, of course, the criteria for those who are eligible for boosters for Pfizer and Moderna. Of course, it's anyone 65 and older, anyone 18 and older who live in long-term care settings, anyone 18 and older who has an underlying medical condition, and anyone 18 and older who live or work in situations putting them at greater risk of exposure to COVID-19. So in essence, short of a few exceptions, pretty much anyone over the age of 18, if they've been fully vaccinated and it has been at least six months after the initial series are eligible for booster doses, should they choose. The Johnson &amp; Johnson booster doses are also recommended for anyone over 18 who's received Johnson &amp; Johnson two months, two or more months following their initial vaccination. So we've got many people also eligible for Johnson &amp; Johnson boosters, or in this situation, should they decide they want to have mix and match and get a booster dose of Moderna or Pfizer, they can also do that. Next slide, please. So exciting news. In fact, I was multitasking, listening to the board meeting as well as the ASAP meeting, and as of 5:00 PM Eastern Time, the ASAP Board voted unanimously to approve the emergency use authorization of the Pfizer vaccine for children ages five to 11 at the lower dose, that it's a different dose for our youngsters. What the only piece that is left in this process is for the CDC Director to to approve the ASAP's recommendation, which we anticipate happening very quickly. Probably not until morning, just given that it's already after 5:00 on the East Coast. However, stranger things have happened. With that being said, what that means is as long as it is fully approved, as we anticipate, we at Health and Human Services will begin administering the lower dose Pfizer vaccine to the five to 11-year age group beginning Friday, November 5th. That is assuming that we receive our vaccine. We have pre-ordered as we were allowed to do. And I was trying to get some confirmation to see if we had received it yet this afternoon. As of, oh, as I just got an email across my other screen, and we received our first shipment today and are scheduled to receive our second tomorrow. So with that being said, as long as the CDC Director formally approves, we will begin administering child vaccines on Friday. And I'm gonna give you some specifics about how we're gonna do that and how we want to proceed at our location, keeping things clear and safe with respect to all of the different doses and vaccines that are now in play. Just want to also note here that Flagstaff Unified School District is now going to be working with Premier Medical Group, who as you're all very familiar with, has been a partner, provider up here working with us, doing vaccines out of the Fieldhouse location. Most recently, just this past Saturday, started administering vaccines at the Coconino Community College location on Saturday mornings. And then I've been administering vaccines for the past couple of Fridays at the Elks Lodge. They are now going to be working with Flagstaff Unified School District to 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 make arrangements to get other vaccine clinics scheduled with the schools. This will be both for obviously the 12 and older middle school and high school age group, as well as then incorporating the younger ages over the next month or two as we go forward. Next slide, please. So a couple of late-breaking developments. So late-breaking that Steve was getting a text this afternoon saying, bring me up to speed. What are we doing? We're opening a vaccine site at the mall. Yes, we are on Friday. So last week with the approval of the boosters, Wednesday, as you're aware, we've been doing clinics at HHS on Wednesdays and Fridays. And Wednesday was our first day administering boosters. Of course, everyone was very excited about the booster option. And so we had a flood of folks show up at HHS, in fact overwhelming the parking lot a bit on Wednesday, which the team managed stellarly in terms of taking care of the situation. Were able, all hands showed up on deck and managed the volume and number of folks. And in fact, we're so well-prepared that Friday was a much different day and much less traffic at HHS. However, with that being said, one of the things that we have been contemplating anyways, figuring out how to move our vaccines indoors for the safety of our staff and the health and safety of our staff because of getting cold, the weather, and then also concerns about people parking in the parking lot, trying to get into the building, having to do some reconfiguration in the building to to move vaccines inside. So with that being said, the team got incredibly creative on Friday, just last Friday, and had was contemplating, is there any way there's space at the mall that we could possibly bring things indoors? And and Tammy Sioviego at Facilities, the Acting Assistant Facility Director, said, let me make some phone calls. And Michelle and Eve had been on the call with her, saying, is there anything out there? And lo and behold, the Flagstaff Mall said, yes, you can use the old Denny's location. I think it's eventually gonna become a bowling alley, but it's or something like that. It doesn't have a contract right now. And so the Flagstaff Mall has generously contributed this convenient location for COVID vaccine clinics for at least the next eight weeks. We'll take a look at how long we want to continue. And so what we're gonna do is this Wednesday, so tomorrow, we will still have our regular hours here at HHS for our vaccines, and we will run those here at this location. And then on Friday, our vaccine operations will transition to the Flagstaff Mall. And it is going to be in what was the old Denny's. So it's right there in the front, next to the Hobby Lobby. There's gonna be great directional signage up out there, and folks will be able to enter from the outside doors. There's ample parking. It's a great location. And in partnership with the mall, we're bringing folks to the mall and also have the opportunity to be vaccinated. What we're gonna be doing at our location is and our hours are adjusting because we need to conform with mall hours. And so the mall opens at 11:00. So we will be doing adult vaccines from 11:00 to 1:00. So that's anyone 18 and older. And then we're gonna transition from 2:00 to 5:00 to only do vaccinations for children. And that will be all the way up to 17. So from five years to 17, of course, a guardian must accompany minors. And this will allow us to have good separation for the different types of vaccines and allow for hours that are conducive to kids getting out of school, parents being able to have kids come to the mall if they so wish to have their child obtain that vaccination there. Then next Wednesday on the 10th, we will also do the same thing and shifting both of our clinic days over to the mall. Again, replicating that 11:01 for adults and 2:05 for the five to 17-year-olds. So a couple of things, I want to pause here for just a moment. One, I want to first of all, thank the Flagstaff Mall. We're gonna be putting out an ad in the newspaper paper here coming out to not only advertise that we are doing this, but also thanking them as well. This is going to be great. Our logistics team, Wes and Tim, have been hard at work. And along with facilities, getting the location ready, just so no one has the picture of all the booths of the Denny's diner. All the booths have been removed. No one's getting vaccines in booths. It's all an open floor plan. There's privacy curtains and and places for people to sit and be able to wait for the 15 minutes and make sure or the 15 or 30 minutes and make sure that there's no adverse reactions. And so that will be all set up to begin on Friday. And so with that being said, we won't be running clinics out of HHS. So what that means is tomorrow is the last day that you are able to go, come to HHS through the drive-through, drive-in park option for flu vaccines and COVID vaccines, but for flu vaccines. So we want to encourage anyone who may want to participate in that to both the public and certainly all of county staff who may want to take advantage of getting their flu shot here at what Sandy Deal describes our public defender as such a slick operation to drive up and then, you know, five minutes, you have your flu shot and you're on your way. After tomorrow, flu flu vaccine will still be available at HHS, but that will be through our clinic by appointment. So we will ask folks to schedule appointments for flu vaccine. So next slide, please. So wanted to just give an update. You know, we continue to have pop-up events throughout the county just this past weekend. And yesterday, we were in Page on Saturday. Um, just this past weekend and and yesterday we were in Page on Saturday. Uh, in partnership up there with Canyonlands, as well as the mayor, Mayor Dyak up there. Get gathering others and had a great turnout, administered another hundred and six doses, which um many of. Those doses were second doses from our last trip up there as well as additional um. New first doses. And then we were in Tucson and Grand Canyon Village yesterday. Um, and administered fifty-two doses up at Tucson and seventy-five over Grand Canyon Village. Many of those are also booster doses, just for all of your awareness. Um, as I already mentioned, tomorrow at King Street will be our final event he'll. Held here, um and we will be operating from ten to one and then we take. Um, a two-hour break and then we go from three to five PM. Our PMG Partner Sites, um they continue to have the Fieldhouse. Um, hours they have expanded now, so they're available on Friday, Saturday and Sunday from one to six PM. And at the Elks Lodge on Fridays from seven AM to eleven AM. And then, as I mentioned, they just started at the Coconino Community College this past Saturday. On Saturday mornings from seven AM to noon in room six oh six. And all of this information is on our county website, going out on social media and all of uh. Our usual locations, including each of you uh sending this out to your constituents. Over your social media platforms and and electronic communication, and it's greatly appreciated. I do want to make a note that the PMG Partner Sites. Will also be providing child vaccines. Um, I believe they also intend to start on Friday. Have will have them available and they will be providing booster doses and all of the. The other COVID vaccines as well. They have a plan in place to have separate. Um, lines and areas where those who are five to eleven will be serviced versus. Uh, those who are adults and with separate staff to be able to manage and keep all of those uh different kinds of doses separated. Next slide, please. So in in advance of not knowing when. Um, we may be doing another formal update to the board regarding COVID over the next couple, ne- next few weeks, at least before uh. The Thanksgiving holiday, we just wanted to provide some update about um holiday hours and some things that will change on HHS side. Uh, with respect to the holidays. So the Partner Vaccine Sites will be closed on Thursday. Uh, Thanksgiving, November twenty-fifth and the Friday after, they will also be closed at their locations on Friday. Uh, December twenty-fourth, Saturday, December twenty-fifth and Sunday, December twenty-sixth, and then, of course, on Friday, December thirty-first and Saturday. Um, January first. So just put that, we wanted to put that out there. And then for everyone's awareness as well, the COVID Weekly Report. Um, because of the timing for when Thanksgiving falls and when the. Investigation Surveillance Teams are able to put together the report, we were not going to be publishing a report on Friday. Uh, November twenty-sixth. And in fact, what we will do is include two weeks of data the following. When we publish the report on the following Friday, which will be December third. So just wanted to give everyone's a heads up about that, that we will be. Going two weeks without a report. And next slide, please. Just a couple of things. I've already mentioned a lot about the schools, but I did want to just make a couple of comments regarding. Um, the efforts of surrounding, keeping schools safely open. I would be remiss again if I did not say how. Appreciative we are of the schools in Coconino County. Um, and and all of the work that the different school boards and all other faculty and staff are doing to keep the kids safe, to. Put proper mitigation measures in place and. Work with the families and kids as there are exposures and outbreaks that occur. And I just want to say thank you to. Not only our school partners, but also our school investigations team here at HHS. We have a phenomenal team of folks on our investigations. Monitoring teams that are working directly with the schools who have daily conversations and talk them through outbreak situations. Help give guidance and recommendations and provide information to them and 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 a lot has been going on. We continue to do all this behind the scenes. There have definitely been outbreaks. There have been many schools. Uh, throughout Coconino County that at different times have had outbreaks in different classrooms or with athletics. And other things, but there's really been a good concerted effort in. How we mitigate that and contain those outbreaks. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Um, participating in that and that ongoing work. And um, and then lastly, just with the. Uh, schools vaccination clinics, as I'd mentioned, PMG is going to be working with FUSD and then HHS is. Going to be uh putting together all of our um. Plans for and working with getting the charter schools and all of the outline schools. Um, set up with what's going to work best for them to bring, make sure that we have vaccines um out to our schools around the county. Next slide, please. So my last slide is that reminder that flu season is still here. Um, we, if you haven't gotten your flu shot, please get your flu shot. Um, as I said before, county employees are invited to come to our HHS Drive-Thru Clinic tomorrow. Um, one last opportunity, as well as the public, the public is also absolutely welcome. Uh, to get their flu shot at our drive-through operations. After that. Um, they will be available at our clinic by appointment. You can call six seven nine seven two 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 to schedule your appointment. And of course, remember that our pharmacies, our Vera Clinic, our doctor's offices throughout Coconino County have the flu shot readily available. And you can get that in any of those locations. Our pharmacies will also have the COVID, uh they already have the COVID. Um, booster vaccines for Moderna. And Johnson and Johnson, and of course for Pfizer. And um, I don't know how many of our va- our pharmacies yet are going to be administering. The child vaccines yet. We're waiting to hear some other information. A- as well as um other entities who are going to be able to administer. Uh, those vaccines, but right now I can say for certain that we will have them, obviously with the HHS will be administering and then PMG. Um, our partner contractor will be administering as well. And we're um working with. All the opportunities to get that childhood vaccine out throughout the county and including um. Continuing to work with our partners. Around the county to help them be ready to administer childhood vaccines as well as the booster doses. So with that. I think I am at the end of my presentation and if uh Lindsay, you want to take down the slides, I can stop and answer any questions.
Peace. I I thought I pushed the button. Now I'm unmuted. Alright, so we'll go to questions or comments. Let's just walk through it. Uh, Patricia.
Yes, um, as always, Kim, so appreciate you and your team. Uh, this is quite, this is quite an update. I was taking pictures because I want to make sure to get this on my social media and there's a lot of stuff to get out there. So. Uh, really appreciate the update and uh very exciting that uh some of our our uh. Young residents are are going to be able to get vaccinated uh and um that's very exciting news. And I'm assuming that when you put. You put the numbers in there, Coconino sixty-eight point five percent have been vaccinated. Is that for the app, the the population that is eligible for vaccinations?
Yes.
That'll but probably change again here pretty soon when we, when we get the younger kids available for vaccinations. So. Um, and then just, I I I know the answer to this, but I just want to hear it from you so that I can put it on my Facebook site. Um, I um had some individuals that were complaining on Facebook indicating that the county. On the Moderna was not giving the half-dose booster. And I'm assuming that is totally incorrect and that in fact, the Moderna is in fact the half-dose booster. So. I will make sure to clarify that when I see that misstatement on there. Um. And I appreciate the holiday hours. I I think it's important and I think many of us probably know and undoubtedly know people. That have gotten that breakthrough COVID um infection. Uh, so I think it's so important for us to continue. To preach, you know, wear your mask, wash your hands. We are still in the midst of a COVID epidemic. And it is really important. We all do our part, get vaccinated, get the shot. Uh, make sure your children have been fully vaccinated, get the booster when you're ele- and when you're eligible and when you're in public. Maintain that six feet social distancing as well as uh wear your mask. So again, thank you. Um. Very proud of how Coconino County has stepped up and addressed the needs of our community. So thanks again.
Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. And just so you know, you have a copy of this presentation in your email, uh so that you can. Um, that you can grab those slides if you need. And thank you for that. We absolutely are, the Moderna booster is a half-dose. And we ask everyone, when you're coming for your boosters, please bring your vaccine card. We need you to bring that so that then we can. Stamp it with the that and that you can show that you also have received your booster dose. So we ask you to please bring your vaccine cards when you're coming. No matter where you're going to get your booster doses, please bring your vaccine cards. And I would also say just be before uh Supervisor Horstman, just. To say that, you know, one of the things that I'm super excited about with respect to. The childhood vaccines being authorized, uh and we're going to be doing a lot of messaging over the next few weeks, obviously out of HHS. About this, but that this is really a great opportunity for. Families to get their young children vaccinated and make for safer holidays. Um, for those as they go to visit family and those who are most vulnerable and, you know, really. Create that opportunity to prevent, um, you know, continued loss of family and loved ones. So we're hopeful that people will take advantage of that. Um, there will be, you know, plenty of opportunities. We ask for people's patience because depending on how y- we are storing the Pfizer vaccine. We do have ultracold storage here at HHS now, and we've told our other per. Providers and other medical providers that we're happy to transfer them smaller doses of vaccines so that they can manage it. Um, we're still waiting for our partners to be in a place where they um plan to start administering uh that. Uh, childhood vaccine. So we will continue to be pushing that um in to the best of our ability. So I just wanted to add a couple of those things that you sparked as you brought up your comments. But thank you.
Good, thanks.
Oh, good. I have my mute off. Uh, Serama.
Hey, thank you. Well, first off, thank you for for the presentation and for all your hard work for you and your department. Um, leading the way as always, and we really appreciate all the hard work. Um, and I'm really excited to hear that that the vaccine is going to be available for younger people. That's going to be really important and uh. Just want to keep stressing, you know, as been said before, we're still in the pandemic. And so that means. That we can't let our guard down and and be sloppy, especially right now during the times of the. Of the holidays when we're getting, seeing or visiting our loved ones. So uh, please keep taking those precautions and uh. I'm also really excited to see the 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 pop-up clinics, having a space out at the mall. That's going to be very helpful. That's exciting. And so uh. Again, I just appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Alright, I my understanding is Judy's uh battery died on her phone. Uh, so we lost her uh Vice Chair Fowler.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you to you and your team uh for working so hard. Uh, we thought that we'd be beyond this, but we're still here and um. You know, do you recommend flu shots? And if you do, when are they, are we providing flu shots so that we can? Um, you know, with the winter coming in, um, and what age groups are you recommending flu shots for?
So thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, we have been administering. Uh, the flu vaccine for the past, well, since early September um at HHS. So a- as well as many of our other providers. Across the county pharmacies, doctor's offices, our Vera Clinic has been providing uh the flu vaccine as well as pediatric offices. And really, the flu vaccine is recommended for anyone six months of age and older. And um I, if you haven't already gotten it, get it quick, get it now. Um, we want to make sure that folks are being protected from the flu. Uh, we don't need additional uh people being hospitalized and having other medical complications. Um, from the flu in addition to other upper respiratory illnesses that are going on. So yes, absolutely. And you can get your flu vaccine. There's no, you know. You can get it at the same time, the same day you get your your COVID vaccine. You can get it, you know, the next day. Um, separately, uh whatever makes sense for you personally, but yes, we absolutely are providing it and we want to make sure. Um, certainly after tomorrow, um, we won't be doing the drive-up flu clinic portion, as I mentioned earlier, but we will be. Um, still continuing to administer flu vaccine here at the county uh through our clinic, through our clinic uh by calling. Um, our clinic line, uh six seven nine seven two 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 to schedule an appointment.
Where people can go to our website and be able to obtain the information. So um. Yes, I think the setting up at the mall is a very good uh move. Uh, you know, and then the convenience, though, of driving through was always good. Um, I, I got my, my shot. Um, third shot, uh and that was just um went to the, the, to the. Um, your office in front of your office, the building anyway, in the parking lot. And it it didn't take any time at all and everybody was just so nice and it was. Very easy to do. And so I just um want to thank you for that. And and that's what people need to understand. It doesn't take very long. It you. Um, and you're not required to for a lot of, you know, information. Just letting them know that you're and bring your card because your card is also updated. So. Anyway, I just wanted to just add to what you already said because I went through it uh just recently as well. So thank you so much.
Great. And thank you for coming through our our location. And yeah, we're, it w- w- it's kind of bittersweet that we're gonna, you, I know the drive-up is very convenient. Um, but it's also getting very cold and we want to have, you know, it's it's different than. In the, you know, early days of, I mean, things have evolved over time, obviously, as we're doing, vaccines have been around for quite some time now. And now we're doing boosters. And we really, quite frankly, don't want to be giving um child vaccines in vehicles. They're too small. We can't get to them. There's a lot of other reasons. Um, why we need folks to be coming inside and sitting on a chair. And now at the mall, I understand, although I have not seen it yet. There's a kid's play area like right outside the door where you can get your vaccine. So, you know, it's a good. Tool for parents to say, let's go to the mall, you get a shot, you get to play, maybe you get a treat. I don't know, but um we're hoping that will help. Um, entice some folks to to use that location.
Yes, thank you.
Go Christmas shopping while you get your vaccines, right?
Exactly, yep.
Uh, yeah, actually, you're hitting on it. People like drive up because they can get work done, they can talk to everybody in line. And so now it's shopping. Uh, that's the new thing there. Um, did you, are you done, Pete, uh Lena? Yeah, okay. Uh, so um, they've handled most of my questions, but it is that uh. So just, can you reinforce uh seniors' opportunity, uh unique circumstances, that kind of thing, how you're approaching it? And then I, you know, the other piece I think is reinforcing, there are other providers out there too. Uh, that can help seniors, but could you uh talk about that a little, uh, Kim?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ryan. Um, we have continued to. Um, we had had senior hours for the last several weeks here at um HHS and. For both COVID vaccines as well as flu vaccine. And I will report that we have, it has significantly slowed down. In fact, on our senior hours on Friday. Um, that it was very, very few uh folks that had shown up. So we have. Hopefully made a good dent in that. But what I will say is we continue to have, uh folks can call our call center line to be able to request. Any assistance, especially if they are seniors and they need help getting, you know, knowing where they need to be, if we need to assist them in arranging transportation or otherwise. Um, we continue to be at the ready to do that and are happy to uh be working with our senior population. Throughout the county. And again, uh to as to Vice Chair Fowler's point as well, all of our information is available on our website. And uh folks can certainly call our office as well uh to get connected with someone. And we have. Folks on our team who call back seniors and assist them individually as needed.
Okay, that's that's helpful.
I had one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ramo.
I was just thinking about the the child vaccination clinic. I was just thinking about the, the child vaccination clinic. And I did, now the one that stood out to me was the Friday during, during, from 11 to, to 1:00 or whatnot. Is that, are there any child vaccination clinics that are after school hours?
So, so thank you Supervisor Vasquez. Yes, so the 11 to 1 hours at the mall are for adults only, 18 and older. And then the child vaccines are starting at 2:00 to 5:00.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
And then, then the locations at, so, but also let me add the PMG locations at the Fieldhouse at the Coconino Community College. Those are one, well, the community college hours are, now I'm going to mess it up, 10 to 1, I believe, because I don't have it back in front of me, on the Saturday mornings. But then Friday, Saturday and Sunday at the Fieldhouse, it's from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. So there will also be after school and weekend hours for availability for, for everyone and certainly for child vaccines as well.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. And then you've got a lot of the answer on, on the kit piece, but any estimates on the, usually it's about a month later on Moderna and Johnson and Johnson on there, maybe a little longer, you know, what's going on there?
So thanks for that question, Chair Ryan. Actually, it appears right now that the only childhood vaccine for the foreseeable future right now is going to be the Pfizer vaccine. Moderna has been doing clinical trials. They continue to, although there is not an indication yet of when they plan to submit and actually go for emergency use authorization. So I anticipate at this point, it's likely going to be well after the first of the year for Moderna. So right now that Pfizer vaccine at that smaller dose, they have done trials and, you know, and it was fascinating for, for any of you who are interested. I actually listened to a portion of the ASAP presentation and then the discussion by all the amazing doctors that sit on that panel. And many of whom are parents and grandparents. And as I said, it was a unanimous vote among that panel. And, and many of them took the time to make comments about, you know, that they're, they've either had their children participate in the trials or that their children were going to be vaccinated as quickly as possible. You know, their older children have been vaccinated and just the support of that in order to prevent any child death from COVID going forward and certainly increased loss and, you know, other physical diseases or physical ailments that come from having COVID. So I just wanted to state that. But yeah, thank you for that question. Right now it's looking like Pfizer is going to be it for at least the foreseeable future. I do expect Moderna to come out with, you know, once they get done with their trials. But right now that Pfizer vaccine will be what is the childhood vaccine that's available for, for at least the next couple of months.
Okay. Yeah, I'm hearing trials are looking good, but when is the question more than anything? All right. Okay. Any, anybody else? You know, you've been here twice, Kim. You're going to come back at the tail end of the meeting to give that presentation there? Thank you. We really appreciate you being here and then for all the work that your staff's putting in on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Steve. So.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Trey and I are going to provide an update. I'm going to let Trey kick it off with legislative, some of the legislative stuff that's happening. He's going to touch on local redistricting and then I'm going to, and then I'm going to speak on state redistricting for a moment. So Trey.
Okay, then that's item 16.
Yep.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Chair Supervisors. Good afternoon, everyone. Just quickly want to give you a federal update and a state, state update and then an update on our redistricting process. So to start, I'll first start with a, a federal update. Late last week, the House, Senate and White House agreed to a 1.75 trillion framework for budget reconciliation, which President Biden called the Build Back Better Framework. So as a reminder, this is that initial 3.5 trillion budget reconciliation bill that had been floated by congressional Democrats. Although they had agreed upon a framework prior to President Biden leaving for Europe, no draft language was finalized and it was still being negotiated over the weekend. In terms of what that 1.75 trillion dollar framework includes, it's got numerous provisions. It's a very big bill, especially when you compare it to what is often called the bipartisan infrastructure framework, which is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So the budget reconciliation bill has provisions that have been negotiated over the weekend to support working families, Medicare and Medicaid coverage amendments, issues on taxation like tax credits and tax increases for high income individuals, prescription drug costs, controls, job training, immigration reform, Obamacare tax credits, as I mentioned, housing assistance, in, in home care, tuition aid, and then climate incentives as well. So late last week, President Biden actually stopped on Capitol Hill before he left for the UN's Conference of Parties 21 and made the pitch to number one, pass the Infrastructure Investment, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act or the bipartisan infrastructure framework. And then to also pass the budget reconciliation bill once that text had been finalized. However, progressives immediately pushed back on this by stating that those two bills, as I mentioned to you last week, have to be tied together in order to garner their support and they are not necessarily thrilled about the Build Back Better Framework. They think it undersells and underperforms from what they have requested in regards to that bill. Speaker Pelosi did mention she might try to put it on the floor of the House and the bipartisan infrastructure framework that the president requested passed. But that ultimately did not happen because the votes aren't there. There are still a lot of details, as I mentioned, to work out on the Build Back Better Framework. And many of the House Progressive Caucus members want that to, want the Senate to pass the framework first before they commit to supporting the bill so they can see what's in that bill. And then once that passes the Senate and you have final language there, then they would put their support behind the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Obviously that hasn't happened because there's been even more developments. Yesterday Senator Joe Manchin announced that he was not necessarily in support of parts of the Build Back Better Framework. And he expressed frustration over the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act not coming up for a vote in the House. He said, and I quote, "Holding this infrastructure bill hostage is not going to work in getting my support for the reconciliation bill." So this was after days of uncertainty of how exactly where he was at on his support for that Build Back Better Framework. He then called on the House to pass the BIF. The Progressive Caucus Chair Pramila Jayapal indicated they still plan for the House to pass both the BIF and the Build Back Better Framework this week. And the president also indicated via his spokesperson that they believe Manchin will support the Build Back Better Framework in the end. Our consultant team is fairly confident that Congress will pass the 1.2 trillion dollar BIF and the 1.7 trillion dollar Build Back Better Framework, but it's probably going to take additional work through the holidays. One of the other things to mention on this is, as I mentioned last week, the BIF does include the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act as well as the FAST Act law, which is related to transportation funding. And that was set to expire on Sunday. Thankfully, Congress passed an extension last week until December 3rd. If that December 3rd date is familiar to you, it should be because that's when the continuing resolution for the Fiscal Year 22 Appropriations Bill expires, which also includes the debt ceiling compromise. So December 3rd will be a big deadline for Congress. So as you can see, the next month is going to be very busy there. The other thing to keep in mind in terms of a congressional update is Senator Schumer, who is the Senate Majority Leader, indicated today that he will put up the John Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act for a vote tomorrow with Senator Lisa Murkowski, Republican from Alaska, announcing that she will be, she will support the bill and that she would support a vote to end the filibuster of that bill. So that's something to also keep watch on in regards to Congress. And then one last federal update in regard to the National Defense Reauthorization Act. Last month, you all approved joining a letter from the Grand Canyon Trust along with partners to encourage the Senate Armed Services Committee to keep the Grand Canyon Protection Act within the National Defense Reauthorization Act, which was passed by the House. That Grand Canyon Protection Act was actually contained within the NDAA. And as they're marking up that bill, this letter did go to the Senate Armed Services Committee members to request that that particular provision stay in the National Defense Authorization Act. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain any comments before I move on to our state update.
Questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any.
Just real quick, the Grand Canyon Protection Act, I'm just so pleased as that's moving forward. It needs to get done this year. So thank you. And thank you fellow board members for signing on to that letter. It's really important to be part of the, the process. Proud of us.
And, and just to note, yeah, a lot of work's been done on these over the years, but now moving forward with it. Just to note, the letters, you know, we're trying to get them circulated. Or if we've had the acknowledgement that we want to move with them, we are passing them on the signature. What we need to do is make sure that we get copies out to board members after we do send them off on that. Lena, it looks like you were going to comment. Go ahead.
Yes, I want to just say the same thing on the Grand Canyon Protection. We've been working on that for all the years that I've been on the board and has been the champion, the county's been the champion of that. And it's just, it's really good to, it's still moving, moving forward and all the partners were able to sign a letter this time. Also, the Build Back Better and what's happening in Congress, it is just so, it's so heavy. It just is, it just, just is so, I wish they would, I guess we're all in that boat. You know, we're all, that's the news. It's, it's tying us down. So I wish they would just move forward with everything. And I just wondered too, you know, if we as a board want to write a letter asking Congress to, you know, to pass the, the bill and be able to move forward and how much we need assistance in, in our county for our residents here. So that would be just something, uh, thank you. Thank you, Trey.
Yeah, actually I was looking at it instead of Trey saying Build Back America Better and trying to keep going. Just make that acronym BAB, so we have BAB and BIF right there. So that could work really well, but they haven't gotten to that point yet. On it. Let's, let's see. Go ahead, go ahead Trey.
Sure, Mr. Chair. And I, and Supervisor Fowler, Vice Chair Fowler, I hear you on that and we can discuss ways in which we can let our congressional delegation know of our support. I would want to, I would just encourage us to wait until we see final language. So we know exactly what's in it before we draft anything or send anything. So that way we can really speak to some of those provisions that will really help us, which will give it more of a sense of urgency for our congressional delegation, who, as you all know, are phenomenal to us and represent us well.
The chairs.
But I agree with everything that Supervisor Fowler just indicated. When it's appropriate, I think we should be heard on this.
It looks like you're running. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to say thank you Trey for, for the presentation and the legislative update. I was looking through the news earlier on the, during the lunch break and it said something about the Supreme, the Arizona Supreme Court striking down some legislation from last year. Do you know anything about that?
Yes Supervisor and Mr. Chair, I, I do. So that is actually related to the lawsuit against the budget reconciliation bills that were passed and sort of the log rollings, if you will, that occurred at the legislature. So this includes the election related provisions, the provisions that prohibit schools from enacting mask mandates. And the Arizona Supreme Court did affirm the unconstitutionality of the legislature's actions and affirmed, I believe it was the, the trial court's ruling on that particular item in which they found that they unconstitutionally included provisions in budget reconciliation bills, which were outside of the scope of the budget and therefore a violation of the Arizona Constitution.
And how, how is this impact the way things are going to happen? Bills are going to be put on moving forward? Because I don't know if everybody understands the impact of that.
Sure. And so as part of that, and that's something that I can get you more information on if you'd like about the impacts. We can talk about it more with our attorneys and, and share that information with you. In terms of the impact to those budget bills, what it means is, is that those provisions are unconstitutional and therefore illegal. Again, I would defer to our attorneys kind of on the implementation of that. But it means that the provision, so within the budget, with every year as part of the budget, there is a General Appropriations Act and then there are corresponding, what they call budget reconciliation bills that are meant to carry out the provision, the provisions of that. The Constitution requires that they be related to the budget. And what happened was, was that a lot of the provisions this year, within those budget reconciliation bills, it was provisions from bills that had either been previously passed or that had failed. And they included them in all of the different budget reconciliation bills. So for instance, there's the K through 12 Budget Reconciliation Bill. There is a revenue government or a revenue budget reconciliation bill. And within that, they can, the legislature can put provisions in there to carry out the budget and they do that every year. But what they did this year is they put in irrelevant provisions that don't apply necessarily to the budget and weren't necessary to carry out the budget for the General Appropriations Act. And that is what the court found to be unconstitutional is that those provisions did not. And I've been actually watching the board meeting and haven't had a chance to comb through the ruling. But essentially what it means is that when the legislature is, is enacting the budget, that they have to be more circumspect about the types of items that they put in these budget reconciliation bills so that they meet constitutional muster and they are related to carrying out the budget.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Well, well done on this by, a tough question. All right. Okay, go ahead Trey.
Sure. So, and that's actually a great segue into the state update. So in regard to the, the state update, we're still seeing the composition of the legislature change pretty not necessarily dramatically, but it's, it's changing. We're, I think we've seen up to six seats resigned or changed. So on Wednesday, the, your colleagues in Pinal County filled a vacant legislative seat that was left by Representative Brett Roberts and Representative Frank Pratt. So Neil Carter will represent District 8, replacing the, the late Frank Pratt, who passed away last month. And then Teresa Martinez will replace Representative Brett Roberts in Legislative District 11. And the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors also filled the seat that was left vacant that I mentioned last week in the House by now Senator Raquel Tehran. Christian Solario was appointed to fill that seat in Representative District 30. And then also just a reminder that we're still waiting to see Stephanie Stahl Hamilton's house seat be filled. But she was actually sworn in as a Senator last week. And then lastly, not, I guess there's actually two more. Representative Nutt, Becky Nutt, who represents Cochise, Greenlee and Graham Counties, notified President Bowers of her resignation on, or last week, effective Monday, November 1st yesterday. So she has resigned. Cochise County supervisors will appoint her replacement. This is kind of a big departure because she was actually the Chair of the House Rules Committee and the Ethics Committee. So that will leave a big gap in their leadership. She was also previously the House Majority Whip. And then lastly, in terms of resignations and composition of the legislature, Senate President Karen Fan announced that the 2022 legislative session would be her last and that she will retire at the start of the 2023 legislative session. And she's currently the President of the Senate, as you know, and has served Yavapai County and has served in local government for a long time. So she's basically ending her 30 year legislative career. If there's no questions on that, Mr. Chair or, or comments, I'll just briefly move into just a, an update on the Finance Advisory Committee. Just to let you know that they met last week, they do the outlook for the state's budget and the revenues. And it's made up of members from the Joint Legislative Budget Committee and economists from around the state. And they provide a forecast on the state's major revenues over the budget window, which is basically four years, which in this case is fiscal year 22 to 25. And then the panelists also have a round table discussion talking And then the panelists also have a roundtable discussion talking about the state's economic outlook. Their revised forecast for the state budget. So right now, in terms of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, they forecast that an additional $700 million in ongoing revenue and $1.7 billion in one-time spending or revenue reductions. They project that for the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Part of that is because the, the, the projected ending balance is gonna be much higher than the enacted budget that they, and what they projected. So that ending balance is gonna be 2.62 billion. And part of that is being driven by a revenue forecast gain in fiscal year twenty-one. And then a strong growth of revenue in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. So that's what's driving that. But the, there's some, there's also some uncertainty driving the budget right now due to another lawsuit related to the prop, related to Proposition 108. As a reminder, Proposition 108 was the voter-approved initiative that enacted a 3.5% surcharge on incomes above $250,000 for individuals and $500,000 for those jointly filing. And so there's some, the, the Supreme Court upheld the act. But they also remanded it back to the trial court to basically determine whether or not, you know, whether or not the, the surcharge violated some of, some state rules. So essentially, they also, JLBC recommended that they might wanna put, you know, nine hundred and eighteen million dollars for potent, aside for either potential refunds or to transfer that into the Proposition 208 fund. Because some of that is being included in the projected surplus that JL, that JLBC and the FAC is projecting. And then they also provided an update on the state's economy and kind of an outlook. One of the basic themes was uncertainty related to the ongoing pandemic. There are still a lot of uncertainties there over how that will affect the economy. Federal stimulus and the introduction of federal stimulus into the economy, there are uncertainties over how that will impact things. And then the recently enacted budget changes and tax changes at the state level and then the uncertainty around there. One thing that they did note was that unemployment, or excuse me, employment has arrived back at the pre, its pre-pandemic levels. But the travel and tourism section, which you know, we all depend on here in Coquenino County, they're still recovering from the pandemic and those sectors are not quite at the pre-pandemic levels. And then additionally, they noted that while we did have population growth over the last ten years, if you look at the rate of that growth, it's not as strong as it has been when we've had periods of population growth in the past. So when you couple that with the dramatic increase of housing costs and how that's impacting housing affordability, the basic message was that the, the economy is recovering slowly, but there is still a lot of uncertainty related to the pandemic and some federal and state fiscal policy changes. Happy to answer any questions or, or comments on that. Mr. Chair, or take.
Question or comments for Trey? Not seeing any?
And then just a few housekeeping items on state stuff. The ACO, the Association of Counties Annual Conference, will hold its annual conference next week, November ninth through the twelfth. And then as part of the annual conference, the ACO Board of Directors will meet on November ninth to adopt the 2022 County Government Platform. We do have some of our county elected officers who will be going. And the conference will occur at the Phoenix Sheraton Crescent.
Right, yeah.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, sorry, there's just a lot that happens in a week in legislative affairs. Senate President Fan also announced her intention to appoint Senator Kelly Townsend, who represents parts of Maricopa and Pinell Counties, to the Chair of the Senate Government Committee. So she is a vocal proponent of election integrity. And was a supporter of the, the forensic audit that the Senate engaged in over the course of this year. And then Senator Fan, or President Fan also announced Senator Sonny Borelli, who represents Mojave County, will serve as the Vice Chair of the Government Committee. So last week I let you know that the Chair, the previous Chair, Michelle Eugente Rita, had resigned that position. And Senate President Fan has appointed her replacement. That concludes my state update. And I can move into redistricting unless there are questions or comments.
Any questions or comments? On that last one? That's my comment. All right. So go ahead, go ahead with the redistricting. I'm not seeing questions.
Sure. And I, I will provide just a, a quick update on county redistricting before I move, turn it over to Steve to give an update on the Independent Redistricting Commission's draft legislative and congressional maps. We are continuing work per, our discussion last week, staff is continuing work on draft scenario maps that staff plans to present to the board on November twenty-third. We will also at that time share a draft public outreach plan to you that we mentioned last week to be able to conduct some virtual as well as in-person outreach meetings in which we, we share any proposed maps with the public and allow them to provide a comment. And then once we have those details finalized on the, finalized on the public outreach plan, we will share those with you and proceed to your approval of any draft scenario maps and the public outreach plan on November twenty-third. If there are no questions or comments for the county redistricting update, I will turn it over to Steve for an IRC update.
Any questions on the schedule there? No, not seeing any. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Very quickly, I'm gonna share my screen. So earlier today, I sent out this press release from IRC announcing a virtual town hall that's taking place this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM. This is a first of the town halls that have been put out from the time that the IRC did adopt the draft maps. And so I did talk to our consulting team. And they are preparing remarks that can be considered to be delivered by the Chair or a member of the board on Saturday. In addition to that, it was pointed out to us, and we do appreciate the constituent letting one of our board members know that the IRC maps that were adopted by the board last week have not been published yet on the IRC website. And of course, this prevents the public from commenting on the maps. Let me go back to full zone. And so we have been connecting with IRC staff today. Jose Rivera's been discussing this with the mapping consultant at IRC. And our goal is to get our maps published on the IRC website as soon as possible. So that the public can comment on the maps in addition to letting their, their sentiments know, be known on the draft maps. And so that is taking place as soon as possible. And do want to appreciate our constituent for letting us know about that oversight. So the, the, the letter and the map that was submitted last week was approved by the board last week, was, was received by IRC staff. And we did receive confirmation that that information had been transmitted to the commissioners. But again, going back to getting those maps published, for all the reasons I just stated, is in process right now.
And then for our site, Steve?
And then it's that, I've asked Trey to, to put a statement on our, on our county website notifying the public of the mapping scenario that we submitted, as well as, as, as our map to show the public. And then also where to send public comments to IRC after having seen the information on our, on our side as well. So covering all of our bases as much as we can, sir.
All right. And then, you know, I'm, I'm, yeah, go ahead.
Steve, I must, you know, we're trying to share our maps. Would it be possible to send it to us and we can also share?
Yeah, we can. We'll push it out too. I'll ask Trey to do that to all of you.
Yeah, I think we had them sent out last week, but, but if you didn't, yeah, yeah, that'd be good. Just make sure.
If I can, just thank you for getting right on that, Steve. It's so important that we have that for public view since I know many of us are, are doing what we can to get the word out and get to our constituents and our residents here to make sure they know what's happening. I thought that the article in the Arizona Daily Sun was excellent and did an excellent job of setting forth the county's map and what the county's map presents to Arizona and certainly to Northern Arizona. It's a great breakdown and I was very pleased to see the reporting that was done. And obviously, we want to make sure that the IRC has full use of our analytics and also our, our community and residents have full access to be, see our maps, our analytics and be able to make comments. So thank you for getting right on that. Really appreciate that.
Okay. And, and then along that line, Steve, you know, I'm prepared to go and comment on behalf of the board. I think it would be good to hear from our consultants. I mean, we've used a dual strategy of, you know, Lena has tag team with me. If that's the recommended strategy, just check in with Word. You okay with us continuing there in that direction? Okay. I'm seeing Patrice Nodder head. You good, Ronimo? I see you have your hand up too, Ronimo. So if I missed you, sorry.
So.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it. The hand was from earlier. I forgot to take it down. Sorry.
That's a quarter. Sorry.
Very good.
It's a new rule here. If you, we have to say you're muted. Or if your hand was not taken down, that's a quarter. Staff's included in that too. So don't keep, keep smiling, Trey. You're part of that too.
And, and if you're in the chair's position.
It's actually, it's actually double.
Now you're removed from that.
Here's prerogative, huh?
Money off the bank for my children.
So, Mr. Chair, so the virtual town hall is on Saturday. We need to have the speaker registered to speak by, by nine AM. It goes on at 10 o'clock and, and the site does indicate that the town hall will proceed for as long as there are individuals that want to comment or provide testimony. But you do, individuals do need to register to speak by nine AM on, on Saturday.
So that'll be, that'll be you, Chair, and Vice Chair will register then to speak on Saturday. Is that correct?
If that's, yeah. I think that would probably be what we would do. You know, we'll check in with our consultant.
And as long as that will work with Vice Chair Fowler, I think that's excellent.
You guys, Lena, now that I volunteered to, to use your Saturday for that.
I have noticed that you have volunteered.
You've done a great job. So really appreciate it. The tag team works really well.
It does. So yes, I'll be, I'll be there. Thank you.
So thank you for doing that and for giving up your Saturdays, both of you. And if there's anything we can do, like wave flags behind you, just let us know. We'll be there.
And, and Steve, I'll, I'll count on you guys getting us, getting Lena, I signed up for that. But to follow up, so encouraging all board members, community members, this is the time to speak up. We need people submitting letters. This doesn't prohibit other board members from submitting individual comments associated with it. Lena and I'll carry our direct piece that we've aligned with board on the comments and our consultants have helped us with. But, but if you have additional comments you wanna submit and/or get other community members out there, we need, we need to show the legislature that we are aligned on, we, we've looked at the rights requirements associated with the IRC and what they're supposed to be tending to competitive districts, majority, minority districts. We validated that. We come up with data to support that. We need people to help us bring that message to the IRC.
And Mr. Chair, what we'll do is, the statement that Trey puts together, we'll go ahead and distribute that broadly also. Just to announce the statement, the, the opportunity for the public to weigh in on Saturday. So we'll do a broad distribution of that, including the social media.
And that's over at NAU, right?
No, this is virtual. So that's not in person.
Okay. Well, can you get, would you mind sending out the link? Just so that the board members all have that. So if we wanted, even if we aren't speaking, we can at least take part in it.
Yeah, we'll send out again. That went out earlier, but we'll send it out again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Steve and everybody. And we'll get right on it. That's, yeah. Unfortunate for the first map, but here's an opportunity to see if we can affect that. So thirty days. Okay, where are we, Steve?
We're on to the next item, which is County Manager Update on Regional and Administrative Matters. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share the planning calendar real quick. If Lindsay can pull that up. We just wanna walk through a couple, a couple of the next meetings. So of course, on the ninth, we may change this to the ninth and we're gonna, I'm gonna, after, after this portion or this topic, I'm gonna switch over to have Lucinda update on, on the federal official visit that's happening on, on that day. So with that happening during the day on the ninth, the, the agenda's been shifted. So we're gonna begin at four o'clock. And you'll see we have Justina coming over from City Flag to present the city housing plan. And this is part of their public outreach effort to, to provide opportunities for the general public as well as other jurisdictions to be aware of the Flagstaff Housing Plan. From there, we'll go right into roundtable consent items if we do have any. And then at 6:15 at evening, we do have a P and Z hearing for Flag Ranch. And so it's a, it's a shorter day than we're used to on board meeting days. But again, Lucinda will go over some federal visits that are happening that morning that we need to schedule around. From there, quickly, on the tenth, we have the special session to follow up on the ARP recommendations. We are going to, Mr. Chair, send out an email to you that you can provide to board members, asking board members to provide input via email to you and to, and then you'll provide it to us on what board members are seeking in terms of additional information or any information that they need in preparation for the ARP discussion on the tenth. So we've scheduled that from eight-thirty to three-thirty. It's a full day. But the goal was to provide it uninterrupted, uninterrupted time for the board to, to go through the recommendations thoroughly and to ask questions that may, that they may have. Want to point out though, that the, the tenth does conflict with the Arizona Association of Counties meeting. And so what we're doing is scheduling and toggling a lot of the agenda items. So that we're taking care of as many of the internal items on, in the morning. And then shifting gears to external partnership funding for the afternoon. And this is because during the ACO conference, many of our elected officials have affiliate meetings mostly in the afternoon, but I think we may have one affiliate meeting in the morning. So again, we're trying to schedule around the scheduling conflict with, with the ACO conference taking place. On the thirteenth of November of the annual, go ahead.
Hang on, hang on. Let me follow that real quick, Steve. For the sake of our other electives, you know, our apologies. But we've really tried to work this schedule out and, and so it, it's a chance for us as the board to see a lot of the details. You have staff that's already presented quite a bit associated with it. It's a chance for us to just work further through it. For the sake of board, you know, the idea of the email going out, the gist of it is we're getting to a point where there are some pieces that we need to move on. But in order to do, and we can't, we're not gonna do it all. There are some pieces that'll unfold later on. But we need a better understanding of what board members want for this session. So that staff can provide more rounded information for the board members for what is desired from each board member on that. That's in turn, go ahead, Steve.
On the thirteenth is the annual Stuff the Bus event, and we hold that in coordination with the Mountain Line Transit and also Flagstaff Family Food Center. For those of board members and staff that have participated in the past, it's a fun event. Provides the opportunity to see a lot of the public and to do good things for a good cause. And so that's taking place the, the morning of November thirteenth. And then on the sixteenth, you can see right there in front of you. And then on the sixteenth, you can see right there in front of you, we have consent items, BOE decisions on appeals. We will have the Auditor General, we'll be making the report to the Board Supervisors on the twenty twenty audit. We have a couple of items there. We have discussion read, but we don't know what that topic is, so we may have to plug that topic in. And then let's state about dates. Again, the sixteenth, we are going to try to keep that as light as possible. Because I know the Chair is traveling that week, and so we want to accommodate your absence, Mr. Chairman. And then on, on the, well, actually, we are gonna have a meet, and we will have a special meeting on the twenty third of November. And as Trey indicated, this is going to be scheduled in order for the Board to receive. Redistricting scenarios that the staff has been preparing. That's on the twenty third of November. We already have public input. That's been opened up several weeks ago. But now the public input can now shift to scenarios that you would all be approving. Those mapping scenarios would then be the topic of public engagement, which would proceed through November, December. And actually into the first part of January, and that is a change. And that is a change because that extends the time. We originally were targeting December first as a deadline to, by which to, to adopt. Just re, districts, but we were made aware that at the tail end of last legislative session. The legislature did extend the time for Board, County Boards to redistrict. And that's actually been extended into July of twenty-two, but we are not gonna wait to go that long. That's a no later than date. For Coconino County, we feel that it is intentional or purposeful to have a redistricting done at the county level by mid-January. That provides the opportunity for the Independent Redistricting Commission to complete their work on legislative and congressional lines. Because when they lay, lay those lines on top of our maps, that automatically splits precincts. And so we, and so elections in the county recorder will have to be doing some adjustments based on these new lines. And so again, it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a series of dominoes, if you will. But again, we'll be looking at mid-January to, to bring redistricting proposals for consideration. But even that, they may, that may slide again depending on IRC's work. So that's what's happening there. So that, long, long answer to a short question, but we are gonna be having a special meeting on November twenty-third. For the Board to receive and adopt mapping scenarios for the public to comment on. And then I think I'm gonna just stop, stop from there. We're into December. But I will pause to answer any questions on the planning calendar as, as I've gone through that.
Okay, questions or comments on planning calendar? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Okay, well, speaking of holiday, holiday, so every year, the Board of Supervisors has graciously provided an additional day. Of holiday leave for county employees, and we have drafted, we are drafting that letter from the Chairman to county employees. Extending the Board's best wishes on the holiday season and also granting the extra day of leave. That is taken, that's to be used by employees mid, mid-November through mid-January, I believe. So, Mr. Chair, I know that we're working on drafts with you.
Okay, and just to note, usually we have the board sign on to that letter, not just the Chairman associated with it. Along with the County Manager. And so just for the sake of the Board, those that may not have known this. We've coordinated with staff in trying to have attendance during holidays. We are required to be open. Say the day after Thanksgiving as an example, similar as you get closer to the, you know, the winter holiday. So it's, it's a provision for staff to coordinate with their supervisor and choose one day either way. And that helps assure that there's coverage, and yet it allows families to be able to go off and plan their, their celebration of holidays. However, they celebrate their holidays as well.
So we, and you know, the, the county has closed the day after Thanksgiving. That is, that is a holiday switch, but this is in addition to. So employees can take that extra day off anytime between mid-November and mid, actually mid-January to spread that out. So it doesn't all stack up in one area. So that is, that will be signed by both, by, by the entire Board. Once we get that letter drafted, so we'll need your signature on that. Couple of other things. I'm gonna ask Lucinda to come live and provide a quick update on a federal official visit. That's taking place on, on November ninth. Lucinda?
All right, thank you, Steve, Chair and Board Members. There's still a lot of information coming in, and we've been asked to keep information confidential as well. But it appears that we'll have some high-ranking officials here. From US Department of Agriculture next week. And so we are preparing for that, the focus of that. It's really a singular focus, which is related specifically to museum. And the use of emergency watershed protection program funding on Forest Service lands. So we've been working with Bob and Anna to schedule a meeting with high-level officials at USDA. To have this discussion, and they've chosen to come do a visit and, and are gonna do a tour, which is fantastic. This is great. We'll have an opportunity to share with them why this is extremely important work. And what we need, why we need the funds and what we need to be able to accomplish. And as most of you know, this is very much what we did for Schultz. It's very similar projects, pretty much identical types of projects that we did on Forest at Schultz that were extremely successful. In restoring the watershed as well as reducing flooding and sediment. So I'm really pleased that that's moving forward, and as we get closer and, and share information, we will. But again, it's really a very focused effort. We're gonna have a very limited amount of time with them. And it'll be entirely focused on this topic solely. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lucinda. I think you, Mr. Chair, you might have questions.
Yeah, okay. And you know, the focus, as I understand, is forest and flood-related.
Yeah, it's, it's flood-related for the piece that we're orchestrating. He may have other meetings, or they may have other meetings. But the meeting that we're focused on, meeting and tour, is solely focused on, on museum. And this has been spearheaded by our two senators as well as Representative O'Halleran. They're the ones that really stepped forward and requested this meeting and have orchestrated this visit. So we're, again, we're very pleased about this opportunity.
Lena, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
And, and who's this again that is coming or what department?
Yeah, at this point, it's US Department of Agriculture. So, yeah, right now, we're not, we are at liberty to reveal who specifically is coming, so.
So I'm just thinking that, sorry about that. Even though it is the museum fire, I think we need to just mention the drought. As I'm, I'm sure you may be bringing it up, just to say there's a drought happening here as well. And so, you know, that's, it's crossed our, our county and across the state. And west, in the western states even, so if we can mention that and impact on the economy. I think that'd be really good for those that are meeting with them. That'd be just my input. Thank you.
We could certainly provide information that they can take back with them. I think, you know, I can work with Trey on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. All right.
Couple of other things, Mr. Chair, I can move on and finish up. Today, the County Elections Department and the Required Recorder are administering the election for this Williams School Board. It's an override election, so that's taking place today. And so really, just wanna, really wanna appreciate our County Recorder and our election staff, new staff too. That's the most, Wendy and others, and of course, our current staff out at County Elections. This is the beginning of a very busy election cycle for the next couple of years. And so just wanted to credit them and say that we really appreciate the work. Thanks. And I believe, Mr. Chair, that covers my list of items for today.
Okay, yeah, and you know, on that last note, you know, Patty, if you're out there watching. You know, don't, don't get, you know, too excited there. I'm, I'm here to keep an eye on you. Now, actually, I'll follow up. I say that in just, and Patty knows that. They, they do work really hard, and we appreciate all the work you've been doing with Patty, Steve.
It's a, elections, elections is a family affair here at the county. Everyone touches them.
That's right.
Name of Public Works, the Sheriff's Department, Department head, staff, we all staffed it. So it is truly a big family affair, so it's a, it's an important function, and we want to put everything we have into that. Most, you know, cherished opportunity. Thank you.
That's right. And so just to note, we do have a drop dead at maybe a couple minutes before five o'clock. I think we'll finish before that, but just in case we run up against it. I have been asked, Council is going to consider the maps that we created with redistricting. City Flagstaff, City Council in this case, and so I've been asked to, you know. Visit their meeting in case they had any questions. So we have that happening. Let's see, so we're now at item number eighteen, which is our roundtable. We go through our desert district updates and committee updates, if you have any. So District One, starting with Patrice.
We'll keep it short and quick since City Council meeting's coming up soon. I've been working with the county and county staff on the congressional visits in USDA. Forest Service, just for EWPP funding and discussions on Forest Health and Management. Also, of course, been working with the county and the community, quite frankly. On redistricting for the legislative redistricting and congressional redistricting that will continue. And had an opportunity to meet with President Cruz at NAU. It was wonderful to meet him. I got to meet him in person. I've only met him virtually, so that was a wonderful opportunity. And I'm very excited about the future of NAU with him at the helm. And there will, just speaking of NAU, some of us remember Clara Lovett, who was the first woman, woman president at NAU. And they're going to be doing a naming of the art museum there at Old Main for President Lovett. So wonderful accomplishment for her and certainly a honor and recognition of her past service to NAU. And, Mr. Chair, there's been lots going on with Metro Plan, et cetera. But at this point, that's all we need to get into right now, and there'll be more later. So, thank you.
All right, and you know, I'm sure we'll, we'll get a Metro Plan update at some point out there. District Two, Ronimo.
Hello, everyone. So it's been, it's been an interesting week, busy since last, last roundtable. I attended the, the NACOG Regional Meeting in Sedona, had the opportunity to attend a mixer and, and meet several electeds. From, from the area that are part of NACOG, and then also for the council meeting. The big thing that stuck up, stuck out with me for the council meeting were issues of, of retention of staff. And, and, and housing issues and just not being able to recruit new staff because of housing issues. Not just in Flagstaff, but in other areas in Northern Arizona. So that, you know, again, highlights the need for us to address some kind of housing issues here, here in Flagstaff and, and in Coconino County. I also attended the CPWAC Board Meeting and Committee Meeting, where we were talking about water issues and just getting, getting caught up moving forward. I had the opportunity to attend Brian Fuyu, Fuyu Furuya. Investor celebration, my first time attending an event, an investor celebration and wishing him the best for. Moving forward and, and thank you, Brian, for all your service to Coconino County. I had the opportunity to attend an event at the Murdoch Center last Saturday for the Los Muertos to, to celebrate the Day of the Dead. And then on Sunday, on, on Halloween morning, got up and, and participated in the aerobic winter challenge kickoff walk event. At Buffalo Park, and that was a lot of fun. I'm part of the second floor county team. We'll run for cupcakes. So we'll be out there working, working out and encourage everybody from the county who can participate to please come join us in, in this challenge. And then I had the opportunity on Monday to get a walking tour of all three buildings of the Guidance Center. With Chief Executive Director Lauren Lauter, and, and had the opportunity to see all the services and, and get a better sense of, of the mental health. Support system here in Flagstaff. And so it was, it was a great opportunity to, to observe and, and have conversation on how we can help address mental health issues. In our community. And with that, I guess that, that's all my report for this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ronimo. And then skip District Four. We know Judy's battery went out on her, so we'll go to District Five, Vice Chair Fowler, Lena. Can't hear you. You're muted. That's a dollar fifty. Not a quarter. Nope, you're still muted. Keep trying. I'm seeing a mute button there. And you're working there, you're way through that. No, you're muted. See, like I said. Kaching, kaching, I said, a dollar fifty. I thought it was coming out.
I should be a pro at this by now, huh? You're muted. I like that. So, yes, boy, it seems like we are busier than ever, huh? We always think, ah, we're gonna take a little break, but it doesn't happen. So anyway, we've been, we, I went to the Friday in Page. We finally did our grand opening. Miranda and I attend that grand, grand view overlook dedication. Little Park, it's really nice, has Navajo theme. That is in all for, for cardinal direction. It explains that. This was a really positive project that was done during the, during the pandemic. And we finally were able to do a dedication. From our county, we use our CRET funds to help with this project. City of Page Parks and Recreation, put money into it. The Canyon Club of Page and the Friends of Lake Powell. They, it was a collective effort and it was, it turned out to be really nice. So if you're ever in Page, you'll be able to stop by there, the north side of Page. At the community there, just north of the, the school. Went to Winter Rock. We've been having meetings with the county Navajo officials, county elected officials. With the Navajo Nation and having conversations about broadband. As we move forward and the Board had taken action to move the, move forward with the. The broadband through eighty, Highway eighty-nine and one sixty. So we're going through the process. Matt Fowler and Helen Pistello, and they, we are working together to. While they are working to get the, the right of ways. To get those approvals from a meeting with all the landowners, the BIA, Ada. Then National Forest Service, the Park Service, Navajo Nation. Hope be anybody that owns a strip of land through Navajo Nation or on these, on these highways. So we continue to do that, and so now we're working with Navajo Nation. And all the counties are coming together because there's counties across the New Mexico, Utah and Arizona. That are also working on broadband as we are. So we'll have another meeting on this Thursday in Chindley. So within, I've been co-chairing that with Navajo Nation Council Delegate Key Allen Begay. And so we're having another meeting on that. I was at NGS, we had a, we, there's a. Um, I was at NGS, we had a, we, there's a manufacturing, uh, business there that wants to come in and possibly open a manufacturing company on the site of the NGS in Fachi. So, um, we met there with the 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 businessman and the Navajo Nation Economic Development Staff, the Fachi, um, officials and, um, council delegates. They, we all, there's a whole slew of people that came together just to have a conversation. I continue to advocate for vocational education, um, center and economic, the, um, and a business incubator on the site. And so we had, um, continue our conversation on that, of course, broadband, getting them to support our broadband initiatives as well. So that's what we're we're looking at right now. Um, we have the balloon regatta that is coming up, which, um, we sponsor or help sponsor. We're one of the sponsors from our county on November fourth and this through the seventh. So if you're in Page, you'll be able to go to the balloon regatta there. Um, we also have, um, uh, the the last time, you know, we we did do a, um, we did hold the court, Flagstaff Justice Court and City, a Flagstaff Court, um, hearing into the city on not October fourteenth. And we were able to, um, really help people to be able to get their, um, you know, appear before the judges and get their cases, um, cleared up and be able to move forward or address the issues that it that they have. So thirteen individuals came and it was, um, really good. And we're gonna be continuing to hold those, hold those sessions. So, um, then we have another meeting with BLM. I want to thank, um, Steve, our county manager, um, for joining and, um, really, um, um, standing up for our county with the, um, regarding the big, the the wave. And we have, um, we're gonna be meeting again here soon. Um, and the wave, we're, they're doing a, um, Steve, you might, you might need to help me on this. They're going to do a G O, um, mapping. Well, I guess there's an app, app that will tell, that has like, it goes like a hundred miles, two hundred miles. People be able to, um, book their, get their registration or be able to buy a permit online within a certain vicinity close to the wave and they'd be able to go the next day. So we're still having meetings on that. It's not complete. It's not finalized. We have another meeting coming up and that's where we're meeting with King County, City of, um, Page, Fredonia, um, and trying to see how that, how it will all be finalized. So we're working on that. Once it's all finalized, we'd be able to get, bring it and make sure that you all know about that. So that's where we're at right now. Thank you.
And you did a good job explaining that for what you had explained to me and what Steve had explained to me. Steve had to step out, Lucinda, uh, in his stead during the meeting here. And so, uh, I, yeah, yeah, I think you did well when explaining it. Uh, Lucinda, did you want to follow on that?
Lucinda is the only one that got snow.
Right, right. Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
So, and I want to thank Sue and, uh, we've been, all of our meetings that we're we're having and, oh, we continue to work on, um, on, uh, tax preparation also. I want to thank Steve, Lucinda, um, Sue, our Health Department, Michelle, um, just really helping out to see how how to set up and be able to help people prepare their taxes for them again. Um, so we're now in that tax season of preparation. We're gonna be, um, training, um, our volunteers that will be coming through and will be able to, um, help people with their, um, prepare their taxes again this year. So I want to just thank the county. It's so needed out there, um, for individuals that are, um, really don't know how, where where to get their taxes done or else they, um, they are, um, they pay too much to get their taxes prepared. So, um, we work with the IRS on this project and it's really a good project for our our citizens out there. So thank you, our residents and, um, and we, we even go out to, um, or help people in the White Mountain area also, um, Apache. Um, so we have, uh, partners that we're working with. So thank you.
All right. Uh, I bet you have a lot more going on too, as we all do. Um, so I'll, uh, do my district report. It's been a little bit of time and I'll just have, uh, a few snippets. Uh, and part of them are associated with roads. I did meet with and speak to, uh, board members, uh, with the, uh, Arboretum. Every time you get a new board member or new director coming in, uh, uh, we, we do not maintain Woody Mountain Road, uh, but, uh, you know, what their opportunities are with the Forest Service did have a very good conversation with. Uh, uh, I'll just note, I did reach out to Dennis. Had a half an hour conversation with Patrice, just so you're aware, uh, on it. But really good, really neat guy, uh, looking for the right things to do. Uh, in terms of Belmont Roundabout, a couple of weeks ago, I was thinking, oh, it's getting close to completion with punch lists. Let me go out and take a look. I got out there and it's, uh, the curb was run over. Some of the interior designs were run over. Some of the signs were run over. And and shortly thereafter, uh, I had a couple of community members starting to email me and, uh, and, uh, uh, realized that I apparently, at least, uh, by word, I found I've been villainized out there because, uh, uh, there are, uh, areas that trucks are running over. Now, it is drivers' error, but, uh, even so, uh, you know, beg the question of, uh, one, they're not quite quite done, uh, putting the signage up. So, uh, uh, there are pieces that still need to come to completion with construction. And that's a frustration, uh, for people whenever they're in construction. I, I went to through thirteen roundabouts in Sedona when they were being designed. It took, uh, about two months for the community to start to see the functionality and, uh, associated with it. Nobody's gonna be fully pleased and yet it's different, you know, it's changed. Uh, change brings about, uh, uh, some level of, uh, uh, discomfort, uh, for folks. Uh, but, uh, I I did go out and visit with a couple of community members along with Christopher Tressler. Uh, and, you know, Chris has taken in, uh, points of, is it, uh, is it fully functioning? Uh, if, uh, and what pieces are missing. And so, uh, our team along with, uh, the contractor are still working through those issues for the sake of the community. Uh, and, uh, uh, we'll see how that goes and what, you know, if, uh, there are needed steps, what what we have the opportunity to address. Uh, we won't be able to address everything that people want, uh, but, uh, our staff's looking at that. Uh, in terms of, uh, I noted last week that stepping down as chair on certain transportation committees as well as potentially stepping out of, uh, NACOG's T-PAC, uh, providing other regional council members, uh, the opportunity to step into those seats. You know, it's exception planning. Uh, I'll, I'll be, uh, present and, uh, will have the opportunity to continue, uh, transportation advocacy, uh, uh, as a board member, uh, as well as all the networks I've developed over the years. Uh, so I'm not going away, but, uh, providing the opportunity for transition continuity, uh, associated with those. Uh, as noted, uh, my daughter, uh, has gone through surgery. Needs a month of, uh, recovery. I'll be stepping aside for a week. Uh, that week, um, for the board meeting, I'm only going to attend, uh, the presentation from the state auditor. Uh, we'll, uh, need, uh, Bush here to step in, uh, for that particular meeting. Uh, when it comes to CSA, uh, I will step in for Medium County Caucus. We do have the vote. I have put my name forward, uh, hoping I'll continue as chair. Doesn't mean I will. Uh, if other people put their, uh, names forward and, uh, I lose the election. So I'll need all your proxies to help me out to, to, uh, get elected during that if you cannot attend. Uh, for that, um, uh, when we went through, uh, committee designation, Patrice, you were, uh, uh, filling on, uh, LPC. Uh, so, um, uh, the CSA piece, uh, will need you, uh, to carry the CSA meeting. I will not be able to attend the CSA. Uh, and for any board member, you know, if you're not going, you know, you don't need to submit your proxy, but, uh, we'll definitely. Uh, they don't have legislative items right now. It's more of prepping for the season and and a lot of the leadership cha-changes that Trey already went through. Uh, but we have a little bit of time to, uh, move into, uh, those sessions. Um, a note, uh, again, associated with the district, uh, uh, Snow's comment. So, uh, our staff's working on putting messaging out there for people to can't be parking on the streets when snow removal happens. We encourage the public, uh, particularly in the unincorporated communities, for our, uh, folks to put their equipment on the road and, uh, to push the snow further out. Uh, you know, we need you to stay off the roads, park in a more appropriate place and take care, uh, so that we can have better snow removal for our groups. Uh, just to note, uh, and I'll reach out to you, Lucinda. For Cachina, we haven't used that, uh, uh, snow bus, uh, piece that we coordinated with the school district. Uh, I think it probably would be good that we do, uh, a messaging together with the school district, uh, to help the Cachina Mount near, uh, communities be aware of, uh, uh, what they're doing. And, uh, first year will be, uh, a time of change and it'll be challenging for people to develop their, uh, uh, patterns on understanding that. So, uh, just a thought associated with that. Um, the, uh, and then, uh, uh, Steve noted the holiday letter, so I'll hop into the, oh, no, before. Well, it could be the chair's report or the district report, but yay, lumberjacks on, uh, the cross country. Uh, we just took, uh, both big sky tunnels for men's and women's, and both of them are nationally ranked. Uh, we're wishing them well during regionals as they prep for that. Uh, and so hopefully, we can move on to the national stage again and see if we can, uh, do some repeats or improvements, uh, associated with that. So, uh, um, and then, uh, coordinating the redistricting. Um, uh, I know Lena's been, uh, uh, reaching out to Native American communities, uh, for, uh, our proposed District Seven. Uh, I know, uh, Veronica, you're you're reaching out to community groups, uh, locally. Uh, Patrice and I have, uh, interacted with the Flagstaff City Council, uh, associated with that. Uh, based on messaging, we've already developed, uh, I've been reaching out, uh, with Verde Valley communities. Oh, you know, again, reinforcing, we've done a lot of work now. We need the cities. We need the community members to reach out and really, uh, put those points, uh, to the IRC so that here our region loud and clear, uh, associated with that. Uh, but that's taken a lot of time. Uh, Veronica and I, uh, reached out to, uh, NACOG, uh, regional council members, uh, while they were down in Sedona. I also heard from the City of Sedona. Uh, they've taken positions consistent with ours. I, I believe, city council and Flagstaff are considering that and, uh, other, uh, Verde communities are doing that as well. Um, in the meantime, um, uh, we've, uh, let's see. Uh, letters for the sake of the board, we got the Grand Canyon Trust Coalition Letter on Grand Canyon Protection Act out, uh, as we early had an early letter to support the Northern Arizona Forest Tree Operations Training Center, which we floated around to everybody, uh, that staff had done. Uh, got that one out, uh, and sent to the EDA, uh, Regional Office, a letter of support to NACOG's application of funding support for building resilient economies and coal communities initiative under the USDA ARPA Networks and Community Practices Opportunity. Oh, my gosh, there's a mouthful. Uh, and then we got a letter out to the IRC submitting our our map as we had noted earlier, uh, on this with comments associated with it. Uh, went over the medium county CSA board. Uh, also attended, uh, Brian Ferrugio's, uh, investiture, uh, just a pride of our county, just watching, uh, and Rose, you know, yeah, Rose worked together with Brian over the years. Uh, good turnout, uh, on the legal side from the county attorney's office, from the courts as well as the Court of Appeals and a really, uh, neat event. Uh, and we represented the board and and appreciation as we spoke to everybody, uh, for everybody's sake there.
Can I add, um, Mr. Chair on that? It was so nice to learn more about him and his and his family, how he dedicated everything to his father. That was such a nice ceremony.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. It's, uh, it was special. Uh, uh, and as noted, his father, uh, actually was in a Japanese internment, uh, uh, during World War Two. Uh, but, uh, uh, family bringing presents of, uh, topic as well as, uh, uh, working with community, uh, and how we move forward. Uh, in in many ways, Brian represented that so well and, uh, that will be a great addition to that of Appeals Court. And then the last piece was I went to the Oak Creek Watershed. Oh, that's a district specific celebration, uh, in Oak Creek Canyon, had a chance. Uh, so actually, uh, I now work with our, uh, more recent, within past year, more recent, uh, uh, ADQ representative that works on their area. Uh, one piece that we've continued to try and advocate for, whether out at Port Tadell at the top of the watershed or, uh, for the campground up, uh, that they consolidated to stop the remote camping, uh, throughout, uh, northern section around Cachina with fire thread and other areas and hump house wash, but also down through the watershed and the unique waters of Oak Creek Canyon, uh, bathrooms. Uh, we're really trying to work really hard and they're they're also doing, uh, additional studies. They're gonna update their, uh, uh, DNA analysis, uh, for wildlife as well as, uh, uh, potential, uh, uh, plumes that come from other, uh, tributaries and trying to see, uh, where sources are to see how best to address, uh, protecting that in the waterway. Uh, so, uh, that is, uh, just the tip of the iceberg for all that we all are doing. So appreciate everybody for what you're doing. Everybody substituting in at the right time for depending upon what our issue is. Uh, thank you. Uh, it's been really good. With that, uh, just check back, Lucinda. Do you have any, uh, uh, follow up, uh, for us?
I don't believe we have anything else. Thank you, Chair.
Excellent. Well, um, at that, um, I'm gonna hop on, in this case, uh, Patrice and I have been working with, uh, Flagstaff City Council. They've asked both of us if we could, uh, uh, just be present if they had questions. Steve will try and hop on from a staff perspective. Uh, we're gonna go to that meeting, uh, at five o'clock and and, uh, uh, see where the redistricting conversation goes. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and look forward to our future sessions. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.